It's on? Woo, guess so. Okay. So let's call this public session of the board on Thursday, September 25th to order. We just returned from an executive session. I'm going to start with the highlights.
Yes, thank you. Board members will remember that last year, thanks to the work of Cara Tomao and Melissa DiLiberio, we have often opened with a slide presentation, bring in some good news. I think it's always important to remind ourselves, we've got a lot of good things happening in this district. And Ella and Joaquin Unpractice will probably hit some of those things. I know they also are bringing a critical eye this year, which is wonderful. So let me, without further ado, bring you a little update. And we tend to do this, a bit building by building. Let me see if this is working. And so we do something called a classroom look-in. I'm looking to make sure the look-in is there behind me. So in the spirit of what matters to so many of Hastings residents and people in this region, our kindergartners were digging into Rosh Hashanah. And you can see here both some photos of that from kindergarten class, and also the little narrative there about them really understanding what Rosh Hashanah means. So this was a look-in at Hillside. We then go backwards, sorry, I should have them, the kindergartners, run this slideshow. Then we have an FMS look-in. We had the club fair this past week at FMS, and you see here some of the teachers, some students with, learning about the different fairs, club fair examples, excuse me, clubs at the fair and the examples of that. And there's quite a diverse set of offerings, and I will say, those smiles are real. Look-in at the high school, a robotics team, which did present to you last springboard, and, that's springboard, there's an interesting thing. Maybe they'll design robotics springboard. But we could probably have them come back to you later this spring if you'd like. They are now a full part of the Schedule B. Very excited about what two of our really innovative teachers have been doing with robotics, and they're right off to it. The rumor is that that robot following in that photo, none of the students knew was there, but they programmed it just to follow them. Actually, I'm joking. But it was that kind of spirit that's going on. Athletics, we will bring later in these updates, music and theater and performing arts updates, but athletics, we've got some great news. Out of some eighty-some Section 1 teams, that number's not up here, eleven out of the eighty-some schools received this quite significant award. And what this means, that 100% of our varsity teams qualified for the Scholar-Athlete Team Award. And many of us love to refer to our athletes as Scholar-Athletes, because certainly in Hastings, the scholarly part lasts a long time, the athletic part will too, but we want people going out to use their minds well. And this signifies that, again, eleven, do the math, somebody out of some eighty-plus districts, only eleven achieved this. So this is quite, quite an honor for us. And we also received a sportsmanship award. Many of us have said, winning may not be as much the issue, but we should win with character. If we have some losses, fine, we have some losses, but let's make sure we're at least winning with character. We're not always perfect about that in Hastings, but I think we strive for it, and witness this, we received a major award statewide. We were a number of districts honored for the sportsmanship. Now, we're not always going to feature our alums, but when we're on athletics theme, many of you remember us honoring, and many times last year, Kaitlyn Thomas, off for quite a significant Division 1 placement. Many of you who track, there you go, there's a pun, track track, and higher ed know that Georgia Tech is one of the places to go. And the ACC is known a little bit for their athletics. Well, here's our own Kaitlyn Thomas, already twice freshman of the week in the ACC, so really achieving at a high, high level. And I can't say that for all of last year's 120, 130 grads will be able to track it, and again, a pun, to this level, but we wanted to feature this for you. Now, it's hard to get all of these individuals to stand still for a photo. Who is up there on that screen? Who's up there? You don't have to name names. Well, general category, who's up there? Our custodians. So they make sure that our buildings and facilities really look best and top-notch, and thanks to Maureen and Joe for leading that group. And that left photo, we got together about a week ago, the right photo took us up to this very last minute, and Walter had them all dress appropriately. They're all the men and women in black on the right. So, but again, it's a big nod to our custodians. October 2nd is Custodian Appreciation Day, but we're starting here about a week early to thank them for their incredible work. And we have Yom Kippur coming at us next week, and we want to make sure we're all understanding we'll be off on the 2nd, in recognition of Yom Kippur, but give you a little, just have us think a bit more about that now, because that is quite a significant day and point for our Jewish brothers and sisters. And then homecoming is coming upon us. There's the schedule, I think I'm seeing Ella laugh, I don't know, is there something funny about homecoming? I don't know. But it's a week of great spirit, and it's all listed there, plus in many other places. And that brings us to upcoming events, which we typically end this presentation with. So this is all in the public record, a little bit, a bit of good news from the look-ins, all the way through athletics, through us really making sure we're reflective of different cultural and religious faiths in our district and in our village.
Catherine DiMartino just wanted me to say she cannot be here tonight. She is attending a celebration of life for a dear friend and colleague at St. John's. So just letting you all know where she is tonight.
That's great. Bill, I want to, Melissa, you want to say something?
Yeah.
I want to thank you for doing that, because I always like when the board meetings start off with some, not just positive, but to give people a little taste of things that are going on in the district. It's sort of, I think it frames, so I hate to say we should do it every time, but I kind of think we should. Anyway, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to here from the cabinet. Okay. So Jean, do you want to go first about, Jean is the Interim Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services?
Yes, thank you. So, as of late, we're in the process of making some changes, some significant changes actually, in our special education organization, administratively, in terms of coordination, as well as with teaching. So at the very top of that administrative ladder here, I would be serving at this point in time as the Interim Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, supervising the entire program. But due to the resignation of an Assistant Director of Special Education a while back, we then have one remaining Assistant Director of Special Ed, and that is Mary Angela Sanchez. She had, in the past, been working primarily at the elementary school at Hillside. Now, her position has been elevated to a more district-wide supervisor, a district-wide administrator. So she is positioned at the high school, middle school complex, Monday and Tuesday, full-time, in Room 210, main floor of the high school, actually, and also Friday mornings. So her time is split between both buildings, the elementary school and the high school, middle school complex. And I'm thrilled that she's up there with us. And both of us are responsible for professional development, program development, teacher evaluation, ensuring compliance with all state and federal mandates. Beyond that, we've also hired a special education, we're in the process, rather, of hiring a special education chairperson. This is a new position, and it runs K through 12. Actually, we're having our interviews tomorrow for this position. I'm very excited about this. And the reason why we're doing this, once again, is to fill some of the needs that were left when the Assistant Director of Special Education left. So this position, then, would be someone who is a liaison to our guidance department regarding special ed issues, involvement with SEPTA, chairing some CSE meetings as necessary, facilitating some transition from one building to another, supporting our students in that capacity, and collaborating with special ed administration, building administration, assessing programs, assisting with scheduling, best practices in the field, assisting with assistive technology, and also supporting the department with projects from the state. So this year, we've been assigned two indicators, and that is Indicator 13 and 14. Indicator 13 has to do with transition, secondary transition services, as it appears in the IEP. And Indicator 14 has to do with post-school outcomes, all based upon last year's IEPs that were developed at the annual review in the spring. So those are huge projects, and the information is sent up to State Ed. Also, this individual, whoever it is, will be responsible for helping us with alternate assessment process, getting that off the ground, and it's due to start very soon. Next, our CSE chairperson, we're so pleased that Laura Sullivan is back with us. She is working as a chairperson, K through 12, and also as a consultant. She'll be helping us out with some CPI training, that's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Training, because she, her certification hasn't yet run out. So we want to make sure that we utilize the support that she can provide. And then, once again, in the, in the springtime or early, actually, at the end of the winter, when we start our annual reviews in February, CSE chairperson, we're looking to hire somebody who had to work part-time, who had worked with us for many years. As a matter of fact, I believe she was employed with our district many years ago, and then came back to work part-time, chairing CSE meetings in the past. So we're going to ask her to help out once again. And now, due to the resignation of a high school special ed coordinator, we have the following. So we currently have our coordinators, one at the elementary school, that Emily Isadori. We have our middle school coordinator, Brittany Stamphel, and our high school coordinator, Erin Dolan. Well, Erin has resigned her position, and will be moving on to, as it has been announced, the Valhalla School District. So we are currently going to be hiring someone to replace that, you know, Erin's position. And this person would be assisting at the building level. They would be a point of contact, and undertake concerns among our special ed teachers, questions with administrators, be a liaison, once again, to guidance, assist with the administration of tests for students with disabilities, because accommodations are involved, and coordinate IEP viewing and signing off at the beginning of the year, which was done very effectively, and coordinating the annual review process with the central special ed administration. Beyond that, because of Erin leaving, we also have a need to hire a 1.0 teacher at the high school level. Erin fulfilled two positions, that of coordinator at the high school, as well as full-time special educator. So we'll be looking to hire somebody as a replacement for that position. Shall I talk a little bit about PD, or are we done? Okay, so one of our huge initiatives this year has to do with professional development for many, many different reasons. We want to make sure that our teachers are aware of best practices and can use these best practices with their students in the classroom. So one of the initiatives has to do with GNR, that's Goldman-Sauer and Rutherford, coming to our high school. We have a total of six new teachers in the high school staff, so that's pretty extraordinary. And we really felt that it would be incumbent upon us to provide them with some quality staff development, professional development. So GNR is well-known in the field to provide staff development in the area of integrated co-teaching and consultant teacher services. So we're very, very excited about that. Jen Turner is her name, she's the representative from GNR, and she started this past week. We asked her to front-load the support that she's providing, so that our teachers can be up and running and feel more comfortable in their positions. So we're very excited. Also CPI, as I mentioned previously, that's Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Training. The certification for many of our staff, many of our teachers, as well as teaching assistants and aides, had elapsed. So we are in the process of re-initiating that certification for them. They need to go through a training. We have a lot of new staff who will require the initial training, and those individuals will be sent to BOSI's for the training. It's a 12-hour training, so it's pretty extensive. And then, the, a large group also within our staff will require refreshers, and that's half of that time, six hours. And that will be done in-house, utilizing the support of Laura Sullivan, who maintains her certification at this moment, as well as Mary Angela, who has the certification. And the staff will be trained in both the verbal component for de-escalating issues, should they arise, as well as the physical component, to support students, to keep them safe, you know, in terms of holds, to keep them safe and prevent them from harming themselves or others. And then, the last initiative with respect to PD has to do with reading, reading support, providing this for our teachers at the elementary level. We'll be meeting with them shortly for a department meeting, and understanding exactly what they feel their need is. And we're thinking at this point in time to provide support in becoming certified in PAF. It's a methodology that has to do with, it's an outgrowth of Orton-Gillingham, which is a multisensory reading approach, to provide support for those struggling learners in the area of reading. And possibly, potentially, at the middle school as well, once we meet with that team and understand what they feel their needs are. And I think that it definitely will not hurt to have more of these certifications, because students are now coming in with needs in the area of phonemic awareness, and that's what this is. So, you know, oh, and I also want to make mention about Shifting Perspectives. I know that that's, that was a very popular club last year. So we're very fortunate to have that funded, once again, we're excited about that. And currently, we have several applicants who are interested in serving as advisors for that club. So we're excited to get that up and running, and Andy Clayman will do the hiring for that position. And that's, that's it.
Thank you, Jean. This is great to hear everything that's going on, and I think the PD part of it, the professional development, sounds really exciting.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions or comments?
What is the Shifting Perspectives Club? Is it for high school students?
Yes, yes, it is.
And is it for an affinity group, like for children, for students?
It is.
Yeah, it's learning differences?
Yes, yes, it is.
And that's what it's called, Shifting Perspectives?
So the theme is right on target, very important.
I can share with you what I, what we receive in terms of the description. I have a description of the club.
Okay, that's great.
It's a continuation of a club that existed prior?
Yes, it is. Last year, it was, and it was very popular last year, so we want to make sure that that continues.
And this is their first year they're, it's funded. Last year, it was run by Ms. Dolan and Mr. Stewart as an initial pilot, and then this year, we were able to negotiate it into the teacher's contract to be a paid position for advisor.
Just a brief description.
Yeah, perfect.
So the club provides an identity-affirming space for students with IEPs and 504 populations that are often underrepresented in leadership and extracurricular life. The group fosters a safe and inclusive environment where students can connect, share experiences, and develop essential skills for navigating both school and life beyond.
Is it a once a month or once a week?
I think it's bi-weekly.
Ran it bi-weekly? Unsure.
You may have said this, but what age, what ages?
High school.
High school.
I thought that, I thought it was also open to middle, some middle school students, but I think it was, I thought, I thought that's, I have to look, but I thought that's what I read.
And it's something that has meant a lot to the SEPTA leadership, and even before Ms. Dolan was moving on, that sort of really making sure we had it as part of the Schedule B structure. So that's, that's the contractual aspect, so we were able to build that in. And given that we have a number of people applying to take this on, I think it's a good example of the continuity, because both Mr. Stewart and, and now Dr. Stewart and Ms. Dolan were very active with it. So given even with their departure, we're continuing this core work, and again, listening very much to SEPTA on this.
I think, yeah, that was a big concern, because it was very important to establish the Schedule B, and with Ms. Dolan's departure, there was concerns that this would not be, and a lot of the students had advocated for the creation of this club. It was, I think, came from ideas of some students that brought it to administration, so, although it's a small part of it, it's important that it continues.
We have multiple staff members interested in spearheading this again this year, which is nice.
And a big part of that was a peer mentorship model, so there was push-in. It is a high school club, and there was push-in into eighth grade resource rooms, introducing themselves as a resource, so students also have an opportunity for leadership.
That's great.
I know there have been questions from the board, going back to Jean's presentation, I put it back up to the front part here, of, given the departure of the Assistant Director, how are we covering that work? And, and the intent was just to be, and Jean, I've talked a whole lot about this, and I was very much listening, is that relationships are the core of this, so how can we maintain the strong relations? And, and then as part of, have the work covered. Mary Angela Sanchez has been able to broaden her work, be that much more present. She already has a center, relationships within the district. Had come to us as a very proven administrator, with, I think, supervising some 50 psychologists in her previous job. We've already begun to see her flower in terms of that greater role, very much, Jean, you might want to speak to that a little bit, but we're getting that key leadership and relationship base there. We are bringing back, it's existed in our lines, the chairperson, we had not been filling it, because when we established the second Assistant Director, we did not fill the chair role. But now, we could, can do that as a way to address a number of those critical leadership issues that the Assistant Director would take on, that naturally the chair can take on. And we have some very strong candidates for this, and there is some real opportunity for, for movement within the organization. You may recall that through the early October, you authorized a superintendent to make appointments, and then bring those to you, so that is covered here. So the next meeting, I think Jean will be able to update for you who that chairperson is, but that we can make that decision prior to October 7th, because there is a thirsting right now amongst the teachers and others and families for who might be in that role. Laura Sullivan's role is very, very targeted, very surgical, to specific aspects, and maybe, Jean, you might want to speak to that a little bit, in the sense of how focused that work and how key that CSE work is, and then that plan going forward, as you mentioned here. But there are really four key parts, then, to making sure we're doing that same level of work, and even further work if we can, with, from that Assistant Director opening. And let me be very clear, we are talking a lot about what will be the future here, and we're leaning on Jean's expertise as to, will we have an Assistant Director going forward, the two Assistant Director models? What will that be? We hope within several months to be able to come to the board, after talking with lots of stakeholders, be those parents, students, all the rest, about ideas to get feedback, and bring that to the board. But we're still, in these couple of months, are getting busy. I think, Jean, it's your 17th day, something like that?
That's it.
So we are trying to really focus on the work now, but look at bringing to the board, you know, as we head to December, what are the ideas for the future, and do that with lots of input.
Well, both Mary Angela and Laura have great connections with the district, with district families, and that was the reason why we've moved them both forward. Laura, you know, has a wonderful reputation within this district. She's highly qualified in terms of knowing all of the legalities, in terms of making good decisions on behalf of students with respect to IEP development. So we're absolutely thrilled that she's on board. And Mary Angela, you know, comes with a very broad background in the area as well, has a tremendous amount of experience, and the two of us, I think, have been making a really nice partnership, you know, leaving nothing unattended, and we speak regularly. It's pretty foolproof, I can say, at this point in time, and we're enjoying the work that we're doing, hers being a little bit broader than what she had in the past. And I'm lucky, I'm very fortunate, that I have somebody as experienced as she is to work with.
Jean, I'm just listening to you, I'm thinking how you really, not surprising, given what you've done in the past, but you really hit the ground running here.
Thank you.
And it feels like your plate is overflowing.
It is very full.
I think we all really appreciate your being here and
Thank you.
Trying to take care of all the various pieces that we need for going forward.
Well, I've enjoyed very much being here, so thank you, yeah. I think that I had mentioned to a couple of people, I know that it's been a short time only, but there is such strength in the teaching staff. I've been getting into classes now and doing my, completing my observations, and I am just so impressed, you know, with the handful of, of observations that I've done, and that's an extraordinary, an extraordinary benefit to the district, for sure. Very dedicated staff.
Thank you. I just wanted to add my thanks. It sounds like you've been very busy, and lots of moving parts, and hiring, and coverage, and, and assessment. It sounds like you're also kind of assessing what could be better, who could do what role differently?
Yes.
With an eye for kind of improvement, so we really appreciate your work so far.
Yes, we've been doing a lot of work also in the area of Section 504 accommodation plans, because it had been communicated to me through SEPTA that this was clearly an area of need. So, you know, we've made some modifications in the process and procedures, and we'll continue looking into that moving forward, you know, and meeting with various teams within Section 504. And it's done a little bit differently in each one of the buildings, but we're going to try to streamline and just make it foolproof, so that when everybody knows exactly what the timeline is to process a meeting, and to produce a document before the start of the school year, to ensure that everything is signed, that all teachers are aware of the documents, that they have read the documents and sign off on the documents, and that parents are notified who the contact individual would be in the event that there's an issue. So those were some of the concerns, and I think that we pretty much managed, are managing that now.
Thank you.
Are you doing classroom observations of special ed teachers personally?
Yes, special ed teachers, as well as E&amp;L teachers, it looks like, yeah. So, yeah, it's very exciting. That was always the best part of my job, I have to tell you.
Well, because that's where it really happens.
Yes, that's right.
And what about MTSS, Intervention Services? Is that in your area? I mean, I'm not asking what have you done, because you just got here, and you've already done a lot, but is that?
Well, I'm working in partnership with Melissa.
Building leaders on that.
Yes. And that's a work in progress.
Thanks.
Yeah, it had been one of the priorities at the leadership team retreat, to really look at the three buildings and try and begin to develop more coherence and consistency between what's happening at Hillside, then up into the middle school and the high school. And as you as a board know and families know, we have work to do, but it's very important we're looking at it systemically as possible. And I think it's really important that Jean and Melissa are working on that with the building principals. Coming back to the 504, that is a major area. Lori Afaro has been very important to that work as well. And our newer principals have been really important, in saying that we need more clarity there. And how do we, because if you, in a sense, provide too much, it's really a great example that less is more. And if I've given 504, there are 40 or 50 things, I'm not making this up, how does a teacher make any sense of that, as opposed to what is really that specific area? So these are things that are underway.
Absolutely. And building principals and assistant principals are just so highly receptive and willing to collaborate. It's been a great experience so far, working with all of them. I've truly enjoyed that. Yeah.
That's great. And it sounds like SEPTA has been in contact with you and working with you on all these things, too.
Right. Yes, we're having regular meetings. Tomorrow is the first coffee. We had a pre-coffee. That was interesting. And I'm excited about tomorrow. We have an agenda, and we'll be following through.
That's great.
Just final comment for the board. And Jean, I'll talk about, and I'll listen to you, the board later through your president, vice president. We want to be very efficient with Jean's time. I think maybe monthly updates to you on what's happening may make a lot of sense. There's a lot of interaction with SEPTA. I think you have some six meetings already scheduled over the next little while with SEPTA. That's been a really important point of contact. Clearly, as you've heard, with the teachers and staff and administrators, a lot of contact. So if you think about the key points, and now in the observations, getting some real sense of students, I'm going to be meeting with some roundtables of students. So all of those who are most directly important and affected by the PPS realm, we're reaching out to. So as we head to bringing major decisions that need to be made, and I've signaled December, I think, starts to be the time to bring some ideas. We'll have other input on that for you. And we will sort out as we move into, dare I say, hiring season, which tends to be January, February in our world. Anytime earlier, you're sort of a bit too soon. But we will be updating the board on those plans, and I'm repeating myself purposely. But that will be with input prior to that. We're not going to be doing that unilaterally as a small team, but bringing it with lots of good input.
Very good.
Thank you. I also, I was thinking, I was watching you speak to the board and how the board is all just here. And I know that Teresa mentioned that Catherine couldn't be here, and Alex also couldn't be here this evening, which is why I'm chairing the meeting. So it's a tight group here. Say that again?
We're tight-knit.
Tight-knit, right. Anyway, thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
So I guess we'll move on to Ella and Joaquin, a little student report.
Okay, so.
Best part of the night?
So for starters, I want to give a little sort of explanation on what PL is doing. So I've heard that PL is officially underway starting last week.
Speak into the mic.
Lola, please, thanks.
I apologize. So PL is officially underway starting last week, where the seniors received their group assignments. And they went on their first full PL retreat on, this past Friday, to the Burke Estate, where they participated in a lot of team bonding activities. So I remember from my freshman year, that included a relay race, where you had to put on clothes and then take off these like oversized clothes. And it was a lot of fun. You need to do charades. And it's a great team-building exercise, as I've said, but it really brought all the people together. And then also happening is, next week is Freshman Parents Guidance Night, which is on Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And parents should be informed on the high school experience, what to expect, and how to support students' academic experience, which is honestly really great, considering everything that's coming in the future. Also, a slight reminder is senior photos. So seniors have been taking their school photos, which included one with a sort of more formal dress attire that they provided, but also your capping gown, which is really a nice memento to have. And then also just some fun runs. They had, I remember, they had us hold a license plate that said Senior 26, and that was really fun to see and show my friends and family. And then finally, on my part, pep rally is next week, where we will raise our school spirit for the upcoming, all the homecoming games. And this is honestly just a really exciting time for the high school student body. And it will be filled with spirit days, such as Generations Day, USA, White Lies, and of course, our school colors. So that is the very big final day, next Friday, where we are on X-day schedule. But then we will have a pep rally, in which we'll feature all the dances of the sports teams, which is my favorite part to see, because they really know how to get creative. And then also, an exciting thing is, we will also have a competition at the end of the week. So whoever participated the most in pep rally or got the most points wins some sort of pizza party or ice cream party. So that's certainly a fun competition for the grades.
Okay. It is homecoming week for Hastings Athletics. Dr. McCursie touched on it a bit in his presentation, but we'd like to shout out all of our teams. So on Monday is the girls' homecoming game against Irvington, and girls' volleyball against Dobbs Ferry. So big news, too, Josie McLaughlin, standout player for the girls' volleyball team, she made Low Hud's list for the finalists for Girls varsity Volleyball Player of the Week with five aces, six digs, two blocks, and 31 kills over the week of Low Hud's Athlete of the Week competition. So shout out to her. Tuesday is boys' volleyball versus Rye, girls' tennis versus Masters, boys' soccer against Blaine Brook. That's going to be a great game, hoping everyone comes out to support. And the cross-country homecoming meet. Field hockey plays Austening Friday night, and varsity football plays Saturday night versus Woodlands. So something really interesting about what we do as a student body with the homecoming game is that we sort of turn it into a publicity event for all the clubs and the student union groups. So during the breaks in the game with the pep band in the background, shout out to the pep band. They're always at the games with the incredible Mr. Day. The clubs can set up their own stance to promote what they do and show off some of their super cool fundraising ideas. I remember last year, the sophomore student union had an immensely successful waffle stand. That was great. So looking forward to the football game again this year. And we're going to end with the new fire drill procedure. So on Monday, as a response, I'm sure, to the events regarding the chemical spill a couple of weeks back, we had our first fire drill following a new alphabetical procedure. Teachers were organized A to Z on the Burke field, were organized, were clear-cut. I'm sure it's a cleaner system for the teacher and administrative perspective, so as to keep all students accounted for. And from our perspective, in the student body, I would say it's definitely easier for us students to find our groups and stay together at the Burke before re-entering, again alphabetically, instead of sort of big mush, as it has been in the past, back to the building and to our classrooms.
Thank you. Anybody comments, questions? Dave Verone, you always have a question for the students.
Well, I actually don't have a question for the students tonight, but I have a question regarding the evacuation, because you have a new process. Will the construction of the new football field and softball field impact the plan that you have now?
There's a good chance, not final yet, but there's a good chance that the evacuation will be shifting down to Reynolds for a variety of reasons. We have to sort that out, so we haven't brought that to the staff or students yet. That would not have an effect, because the construction would be on Burke. So, but we would be sort of ahead of that. But we would definitely factor any and all of that in. So it's a good question. But we're a little bit away from that.
Thank you.
The main reason for thinking about the change is, and I appreciate Joaquin flagging, that's all Mr. Clayman and Mr. Waldeck working that out, in terms of the alphabetical, is there still is the crossing of Fair-Gadav. And as you saw in the unplanned evacuation reunification, we're trying to move students through the arrival of major emergency vehicles. And we were fortunate that that kind of worked, but it's another example where for having people go right away to Reynolds, there are some roads to cross, but not the major access point for emergency vehicles. So those are things we're thinking through. But you're already getting real-time witness and critique that we were taken seriously what went on a couple of weeks ago, and really trying to improve it.
Okay. Melissa, going to hear part two from Melissa Samansky, focused on SEL and behavioral data.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So this is part two, State of the District. And it's based on discussions from the presentation to the Board of Education on the 9th. So we had some feedback around presenting some longitudinal disaggregated data, so that's been incorporated to tonight's presentation. And also, there will be comprehensive descriptive behavioral data, and an overview of social emotional diagnostic screening. What I'll do is, after each of those three discrete parts, I'll pause at the end to see if there are any questions. Here. Okay. Okay, so as previously noted, this is one part of a larger whole, the data that are being presented this evening. There are many different ways that students demonstrate their performance, that demonstrate their growth towards learning outcomes. So what you're seeing tonight is one piece of the puzzle. And again, we'll be revisiting these academic performance data sources that I spoke about last time at the board meeting, but we'll be looking through the lens of disaggregated data over time. So one of the things that has come up in terms of internal dialogue amongst the faculty is that second bullet was particularly relevant at the elementary school. Teachers were really curious about the impact that first time of computer-based testing for our youngest learners, the impact that that had on some of the testing data. I thought it was a really good question, so we're going to continue to keep an eye on that. And then one additional piece of context that I'd like to add to what you see here, again, this is a familiar slide from last time, but I would like to add that what I'm about to present, you'll see in many cases, a lack of data for 2020 and into 2021, so the 2020-2021 school year. And that's because there was a disruption of testing due to the pandemic. So there's data that's missing, you'll see it, and I just wanted to frame that for you. Okay. So here is an additional piece of context that I thought was particularly relevant. What you're looking at right now is kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment data across the five years that we're going to be discussing. So in the columns that have a date range on top, you're going to see the actual number of students. Those are hard numbers. So if you look 2020, 2021, that 1607 represents the number of students across the entire school district who participated in that, actually, as of Bed's Day. So really, we're in the district. So when you're looking down at those different groups of students, it does not account for intersectionality. And what it means is, you can be a student who is white and Hispanic, and in these numbers, you are therefore double-counted. So I think that's really important to note. So if you look at, for example, Hispanic students, 239 in 2020-2021, those 239 students are also showing up in other places. So I just wanted to provide that context, because when we're talking about percentages, it's really relevant in terms of numbers of students. And every single student you see in those numbers matters. And also, it's important to consider things relationally. Okay. So we'll begin with the English Language Arts Assessment, grades three through eight disaggregated data snapshot. So we see variations in performance for different demographic groups over the four-year period. We're seeing persistent achievement gaps over four years, ranging from 30 to 48 percentile points for Black or African-American students, 6 to 19 percentile points for Hispanic or Latino students, 26 to 46 percentile points for students with IEPs, 42 to 70 percentile points for English language learners, and 37 to 47 percentile points for economically insecure students, as we compare them with that all buildings line, and that's all students. And this is grades three through eight on the ELA State Test.
Question? Sorry, this might be a simple, you might all know this, but what is this? What are we, like, I mean, like, what is this percentage representing, those who got threes and fours?
Proficient, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, good question. I should have noted that. Yeah. And the asterisk actually indicates that fewer than five students tested in that group, therefore, it's not being presented.
Okay. So just to put this into a sentence, 70, in 2021, 2022, 73% of males scored a three or a four on the ELA State Test.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. So, and then if we're low-income or economically insecure students, 44% scored a three or a four.
Correct.
And ENL, ELL is ENL, right? Only 11% scored a three or a four, and this test is only offered in English?
Correct. And most of our English language learners have been historically exempt from taking that assessment. So at a certain point in time, when you're transitional, in terms of your English language learner support services, then you take the assessment. So you're seeing, you just have to factor that in as an additional piece of context.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So moving on to mathematics, again, three through eight state testing. We're seeing variations in performance for different demographic groups, persistent achievement gaps over four years, ranging from 11 to 46 percentile points for Black or African-American students, 12 to 18 percentile points for Hispanic or Latino students, 29 to 40 percentile points for students with IEPs, 56, sorry, 53 to 64 percentile points for English language learners, and 35 to 58 percentile points for economically insecure students, as compared with all students. Our English language learners do take the mathematics test, and we have translation available to them in terms of, it depends what they're eligible for, but often there's the translated copy. Sometimes there's an interpreter provided. Just depends on the accommodation, bilingual glossaries. Okay, science performance. The science assessment has moved to grade five, so you're only seeing two years of data here, because it's a new test. So we are seeing variations in performance for different demographic groups, but we don't yet see a trend. We just don't have enough time yet. So we're keeping an eye on that as well. I do want to point out, though, and I know I pointed this out last time, it's worth noting again, in terms of, if you're looking at the 2023-2024 data, and you're comparing it with the 24-25 data, really marked increases for all demographic groups. And so, again, I really cannot commend our faculty enough. They have dug in, they have done analysis, they have adapted, and they have changed practices. And they're really using the data. And I just recently got another email that said, you know, this is really interesting. Do you have additional information for this year? So I'm working on getting that. So there, I think now is a really good time to just pause and say, there's been a lot of interest in data in the system recently, especially among members of the faculty. I was stopped in the hallway this morning on my way in, when it comes to our Regents data and students with IEPs, so I'll speak to that. But someone took it upon himself to go into the more, to the longitudinal disaggregated data and get curious about that, and went in at the individual student that, and went in at the individual student level. People are getting more logins, so there's a good culture of data that's developing, and I'm just, I couldn't be prouder, because people understand that it's a piece of a larger whole, and it's really quite helpful to look at how we're doing programmatically, but also look at the individual students.
It's kind of incredible.
Incredible.
The boards, for every, everybody.
Yes.
And Melissa, I just wanted to remind everybody, last time, you told us that the science teachers met as a group and kind of really went question by question on how can we teach this differently, what, you know, lessons learned. So this is really a roadmap, I think, for a lot of the scores to, like, how do you bring them up, right?
Yes.
Get together and really dissect it.
Yes, and so one of the things that I've been doing is working, linking arms with the principals. I'll be redundant at the end, but this is the spoiler alert. So I've been doing work with, so, a bit of a roadshow, so to speak. So I started with the Hillside faculty, and I met with the faculty and presented the State of the District, and just like you have been doing, people have asked questions, they've gotten curious. And then Amy had a structured session following for the building where teachers then met in their teams, so third grade met, fourth grade met, and what they did is they went into a report that's called the Building Benchmark Report, and it's just mumbo jumbo for basically saying, okay, where did we fall short in terms of concepts that students are learning? And was it all the questions, or was it some of the questions? Were there areas where we needed to build more capacity and look at our program? Was it the multiple choice questions they were falling apart on, or was it the short answer that they weren't getting full credit? So that was layered into the most recent Hillside faculty meeting, where we did do that level of analysis. And then concurrently, teachers who were not involved in that were working with their own data, the MTSS team was working with data to review, to think about students potentially in need of additional supports. So there's been a lot of really healthy work happening just throughout the building. The original plan was for me to then do this roadshow at the middle school and the high school as well. However, in linking arms with Andy and with Dan, we've, they, I'm going to say, they took the initiative to build that into some of the work that they're doing around grading as one of our strategic goals, so that teachers will be working directly with the data in that context, rather than a more of a stand and deliver approach. So we're differentiating an approach based on where each building is, what they need, but really emphasizing this idea that we measure what matters and that we can make some gains and growth based on what we're seeing, and at the very least, get curious about it. So on that note, we'll get into some Regents data right now. We are seeing, again, variations in performance for different demographic groups, persistent achievement gaps over four years, ranging from 16 to 44 percentile points for economically insecure students as compared with all students, and this pertains specifically to Algebra I. Inconsistent achievement gaps over time, ranging from negative two to nine percentile points for Hispanic or Latino students, meaning some years, they outperformed the all students category, and negative one to 13 percentile points for students with IEPs as compared with all students, same idea. So depending on who the cohort was compared to the all students category, you see some variation. So that's really important for us to keep an eye on and to be curious about. Moving into the Biology snapshot.
Melissa, just a quick question on that.
Sure.
Did you find 2021, 22, and then 24, 25? Seems to be like, it went down, right? 24, 25 in many categories. It went up after 2022 and stayed up and then went down. Did you find any correlation, like, why that was happening?
No, we're still digging into that, and one of the things that we're looking at right now, because remember, this reflects middle school, it also reflects high school performance. So, so looking at that from the building-based lens in addition to the disaggregated lens is really important, especially when we're thinking about our math program and pathways for kids, because we really need to make sure that any shifts that we're making in mathematics and the courses that students have an opportunity to take along the way, that we're not creating a new problem by moving students too quickly who aren't yet ready to be moved. And at the same time, I do really believe that we set a high bar for all of our students, and how do we create opportunities for everyone to, for example, move into an Algebra I class? Well, the data tells a story. We have to make sure that we're not seeing certain gaps, which would then make more gaps apparent as students are moving into a higher level content. So that's a long answer for "not yet," but these are the things that we're keeping an eye on. Okay, Biology is brand-new, so we don't have enough information. So you'll see the contrast, the other few years will be the living environment. So this is brand-new, but we really knocked it out of the ballpark. I mean, it was, it's really strong, really strong, across the board. Okay, we're looking at our Earth Science disaggregated data. We're seeing variations in performance for different groups, persistent achievement gaps over four years, ranging from five to 26 percentile points for Hispanic or Latino students, and 16 to 25 percentile points for students with IEPs as compared with all students. We're seeing inconsistent achievement gaps ranging from negative seven to 11 percentile points over time for multiracial students as compared with the all students group. Here you'll see the disaggregated ELA data. We're seeing fairly consistent performance over four years for different groups of students as compared with all students. Some variation is noted for economically insecure students in 2021, 2022. You're seeing a 14 percentile point variation, and 24, 25, we're seeing a 23 percentile point variation as compared with all students. But when you look across, the story is fairly consistent over those four years.
Any thoughts about 24, 25?
Yes.
So the question, so it's in the mic, was any, was 24, 25 and the 75%? Any questions or thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think what we're seeing is a cohort effect, exactly who and how many. And, and again, that's, it is very different from the other years, although arguably 83%, 75%. I think that there is, when you're looking at the actual number of students that are taking it, that fall into that category compared to the greater whole. And as I said before, every single number on that, that context slide that I presented matters, and at the same time, when you're thinking of percentages, it's much, it's a much smaller group, and so you see a wider variation, perhaps, depending on how they perform.
Melissa, I want to come back to that point later when you're done.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, there's the living environment data that I was speaking to. Fairly consistent performance over four years for different groups as compared with all students. Some variation noted for certain groups of students in certain years as compared with all students. This assessment is no longer being administered, we have the Biology. And so, again, something to pay attention to is we're thinking more broadly about science and more broadly about Regents performance, and yet, the data will stop right now at the 23-24 mark. Moving into Global History, no persistent variations in performance between groups of students. And I will tell you, this was a topic of discussion at Chair Council, and when we were looking at performance, we were looking at, we're really seeing very strong performance across the years. And when we were looking at it at Chair Council, we were looking at that one year, the 24-25. But this just adds to it. When you're looking across multiple years, you're seeing, you're seeing that. So we see a bright spot, and any reason why that's happening? Well, we need to be asking those questions, right? So that we can build on a success in one area and help it transfer to another area. And there are so many contextual factors around who's in the cohort, taking the test, what are, what's the scoring rubric? What's the test itself? Have there been any shifts? Who's teaching the class? Has there been turnover there? So lots of different things to consider. However, you can't get away from this slide. It's strong.
You can't get away from the slide. Does this, am I on? You can't get away from the slide, and this is very impressive.
Yes.
It's almost like you can't even, how do you even understand it? But I remember, I'm thinking, years ago, there was always, and I bring this up because in my work, when I chaired a college admissions committee for many years, and we would talk a lot about Regents scores and grades, and the whole idea of teaching to the test. And even here, I think that used to be a discussion of how much do you teach to the test versus teach?
It's so hard, and, you know, so I've always said, really, for as long as I can remember, working in leadership, that I will, I will never hang my hat on state test as the thing, because the minute you start just focusing on the state test, which I do not believe happened here, I'm just, as a caveat, but as, as you focus on that, you're losing sight of other things that you believe in and value. So for example, we made a deliberate move to shift to reveal mathematics at the elementary school, because we believed that this was a much more constructivist way for students to be learning. They are making meaning as they are working with the curriculum. There is no curriculum that's perfect. And when you put something new in, it's typical that you see an implementation dip, meaning the performance on a test will drop. Well, what's happening in the classroom is sometimes you see a rise in student engagement and a rise in understanding, and it's not necessarily correlated with the rote process of picking a bubble on a state test, right? There are distractors, there are moments. So I think it is important, because the tests are, they're measuring our program, and they're giving us an idea of trends, and they're allowing us to see different patterns for different groups of students. And at the same time, it's not the only metric of success. We have the portrait. We are believing and valuing authentic learning, which doesn't always immediately translate to picking the right bubble on a state test, right? So I think it's really healthy, Jody, and I appreciate you bringing it up, because I think it's both. Both are important, and then what's the balance on that?
And by the way, I don't think in these schools that we teach.
Mike, you're doing.
I don't believe, at least in my own experience with kids who've gone through the high school, I don't mean my own, my own, but a lot of kids, I don't believe that they just teach to the test.
I don't believe that either.
Learn and think and...
Yeah. No, we're aligned. And I think what, what is interesting is that that data is very strong, and then we have to understand what's happening there, so we can help ripple that through the system. Okay, U.S. History and Government. Fairly consistent performance over four years for different groups of students as compared with all students. Some variation noted for English language learners over the past two years. So we're seeing 14 percentile points in 2023, 2024, and eight percentile points in 2024, 2025 for variation. And for our economically insecure students in 2023, 2024, 19 percentile points difference as compared with all students. I wanted to just pause here and talk about how we are in the process of putting together a data review cycle, and we're doing that for a couple of different reasons. The first is to build off of the work that was presented last year, which is the data review process. At the beginning of the State of the District last year, I put a slide up, and it was talking about different points of check-ins along the way across the school year and thinking about that over time. What we're doing now is we're getting very specific on who is looking at the data, when is it happening, what data are they looking at? And so I'd say I'm about 75% there with everybody. This is also something that was recommended through our DEI and ENL audit to establish that data review cycle, to be looking at disaggregated data. So my eye is on the prize on this, and I hold myself accountable in making sure that we have this up and running with a visual. So at a future board meeting, I'll be presenting that as well, so you can see that. But we are in motion. So as I spoke about before, the faculty is already digging in. We've had a multi-step approach, which started with our leadership team over the summer, digging into data, then the State of the District presentation to the Chair Council, doing that publicly here, going back at the building level and actually having faculty dig in. And then we're going to be moving into more departments. So ENL and I sat, and we were thinking about what would that look like in terms of when and what the ENL team is digging into. So that's in motion. I'm not quite there yet, but I want you to know that it's, it's in motion well, and I'll have a visual to present, probably at the subsequent board meeting.
Yeah, and I might reinforce that for the last four or five years, the board's only had, if you will, one, one bite at the apple each year as it relates to data. So if you went back to look, you'd say, okay, gosh, I'm not going to hear about that again for, till next year. No, no, we're changing that. And so I might even be by the end of October, us and two meetings that Melissa can bring forward what the data review cycle is, which will be a big step forward for us in Hastings. And Melissa's been sharing that we're shifting now, and we're not viewing data as, it's something to look at, address, and there is quite troubling data here as it relates to performance gaps, and we will want to talk with you about that. But we're going right at it, looking at and dealing with it, and then systematically saying to you as a board, and through you, the village, and the parents and all the rest, at multiple times a year, we're going to be looking at data so we can understand it. And that is, that is new in anyone's recent memory in Hastings.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add to that and say, so it is not, so unfortunately, it is not a new concept that there are groups of students that are underserved in education, and that is not a Hastings issue. But what I said to the Hillside faculty the other day is, what is, what is an issue for Hastings is that we are able to work within our sphere of influence to make a difference for our groups of students and our individual students. So we can get in there. So if we have a good sense of where we are falling short, we can be very deliberate in targeting. You saw those sample size numbers, you saw those low numbers. We can get right in there, and we can work at the individual student level. So at the same time, even though having what they call subgroup data not meeting where all students are comparatively, unfortunately, is a very big ubiquitous problem happening everywhere, and it doesn't excuse it in Hastings, and we need to have, be, have our agency around that.
Yeah, let me, let me just reiterate the point. I know we're going to keep moving, get a chance for the board to engage, but Slide eight was a very important addition by Melissa today. To put in context, the numbers we're talking about here, and in the last meeting, we had a good discussion about, do you come at this fundament, I mean, these are significant performance gaps, and we want to talk about that. Do you come at this with a macro holistic approach? Yes, and also, though, are numbers of particular students who we have to provide a better opportunity to are so small that allows us the opportunity, scale-wise, to dig in? So that's where I feel very strongly that we do take as much as possible an individualized approach, because we may be able to actually begin to move the needle there. If we take macro approaches solely, which we've been doing, you may miss students when it's a very focused type of approach we can take. And as we move into budget season, we'll need to be thinking about, for example, the MTSS question, the other types of questions, supports, all the rest. We know in math, we have some significant gaps that we have to look at. So there's all be things we'll be coming back to. But that's where I just want to stress, the individualized approach in a district of this size does matter and can give us some real octane to get something done. So I know we want to keep moving.
And what you're looking at, before I ask you to close your eyes so I don't make you seasick, scanning back through, this is our enrollment data, this is not necessarily every student who tested. Okay? And this is also K. And this is also K-12. So it's not necessarily three through eight. And it's not necessarily regions testers. So it's just, just a little bit of additional context. Okay, I apologize for the scroll. I'll get you there. Are there any other questions about the academic data before we move on?
I have a couple of questions. Some specific, some more broad. First off, I'm, I appreciate what you both said around looking forward on this, right? Because obviously, what I'm seeing and what we've seen with the data is disheartening, right? When, when you see those gaps specifically, and I guess this is kind of leading to my question, right? I'm seeing on the high school level that these gaps kind of close up as, as the children get older, right? So I guess my question, and this is broad, is why are we seeing on the elementary, middle school level such a large gap with our lower income and our special ed? And specifically our black students? Because that's, that's the part I don't, I don't understand.
Let me take one quick shot. And Andy Claman's not here, but I think as the high school builds out the mix of data and evidence that reflects the high school, it will not solely be the regions. So I think the data, evidence discussion is going to be more robust. And that begins to get towards your answer. We actually have more robust indicators of what's happening at, at the elementary level with the, you've seen the STAR results, you've seen also now the state results. So we have to think about that. It's also, there may be a complement into this. You have to understand that over time, since the vast majority of our students are here for many, many grades. I mean, I think Ellen Joaquin can say from their classmates, 85 to 90% have been here since, since kindergarten. So by the time you hit that high school level, we're doing some significant catch-up. That's, that's a hypothesis that I would love to see us figure out. And I think Andy Claman, Tara, the faculty, department chairs who Melissa's working with are seeing that. The science is an example, you know, where there was a very robust discussion between the social studies department chair, Greg Smith, and Melissa Shandroff about that. So if I'm being clear, that we, I'm hopeful that the high school's saying, when we have that much time with students, we can take a gap that for some of our students is far worse than the national average. Let's be clear what's going on here. Far worse than the national average, a very small number of students. But by the time we get to high school, if the regions is a good valid barometer, we're bringing it a lot closer, if that's helpful.
Except in earth science for some reason. Why is earth science the outlier? No shade to earth science, by the way.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add, and then I can speak to that too. So I, for the three through eight testing program against the regions testing program, it's like apples to oranges in terms of test construction and what's being measured. So I think some of what we're seeing, that plays into that. Okay? And the other thing is, when you're thinking about our younger learners, there is a shift that starts to happen from learning to read to reading to learn. And when they're approaching their ELA assessment in, in the earlier grades, right? And they're, they're approaching their math assessment, I would argue that both of those are reading tests. And then math has the additional component of mathematics. But they have to read, they have to read it, right? And so I think it's a different test. The other thing is, I, we have different pathways in high school in terms of how we differentiate for students. So in, in high school, there are different differentiated course pathways. Whereas at the elementary level, there's often differentiation within a classroom, right? And so I think those structures play into the mix too. In terms of earth science, we are not the only district, but we are a brave district. And we have chosen to give the earth science regions in eighth grade for all students, which I would say at this point, most places are not doing. And the reason we have opted to do that is it allows us to check off our regions requirement for students early. And it requires a lot of TLC and a lot of thoughtfulness. But that's why you would see some, some performance differences there because we are actually quite brave to say, all of our students should have access to earth science. I suspect that this year, we may see even more variation in earth science because they're changing the, we're taking the new assessment. And that is a much more rigorous assessment this year. And it's already quite rigorous. So we're staying brave right now, but we're not blind to the fact that we may need to adapt and we may need to change what we do. We're keeping an eye on our program. We're keeping an eye on our support. This year, we built an additional lab support to allow everyone to be successful. That's the hope and the dream. And also, it is a little bit of a pilot because we haven't lived this before. So we'll see. And we're continuing to monitor. But that's, that's my assessment.
It can be a lot of pressure though, in eighth grade to have to perform on the earth science regions.
Yes.
And perhaps just like, perhaps in the future, it would be considered just like math eight, eighth grade math, whatever it's called, is an option. Perhaps there is a general preparatory earth science.
A science eight.
Yes.
So we're playing with both of those, meaning, do we move to a science eight? Do we keep things as they are? Do we shift to an algebra for all? Do we, we're, we're looking at data and we're considering all of these things. These are not easy decisions and we have to make sure we're making them in very informed ways. And what we don't want to do is create a situation where years back, they implemented the Common Core and they said, here are your new standards. And they, the, the reason that that implementation did not go as well as it could have is they didn't build a runway for that transition to happen. And so they changed, they moved the cheese. And they basically said, you all have to get to here. But having the prerequisites to be able to get there, it wasn't in place yet. So to make up for that, they were essentially often asking much more than a year's worth of growth to hit those new standards. So we have to think about that because if we're creating a new, more open accelerated pathway or pulling back on one, we just, we have to think about the impact of the shifts on the program.
I just have one more question. So, so from, from my understanding, we're looking at a learning curve, right? So we're talking about a learning curve that is kind of getting steeper as the kids get older, as they get into high school. So I guess the focus now in, in kind of looking at the data and these gaps would be to, I guess, change that curve, right? So the kids are accelerating faster in elementary and middle school? Is that a correct, like?
I think, no. It's really around how do we best meet them where they are? And how do we make sure we're creating open pathways for students to move through the system, access coursework that is more accelerated, should they wish, right? How do we do that well and make sure that we're not creating new problems, which is that students don't have the prerequisite knowledge to lead into being successful with those higher level concepts? I mean, that, it is really an art and a science. And so you'll hear more from me in the future, especially about mathematics. And we meet, so Greg Stevens and Dan Waldeck and I are meeting weekly at this point to make sure that we are unpacking many different things related to mathematics to think about how we can strengthen the pathways in the middle school specifically. And these are the things we're thinking about. How do we not suddenly then accidentally do this? You know, if we have a group, and I showed you, we have a cohort that was showing 66% proficiency on the state test, right? That's something to be curious about. Are we also seeing that in our STAR assessment data? Are we seeing that in the local classroom performance? How are these kids doing? Was this an anomaly? Why are we seeing that? And if we're seeing that in terms of the success rate, then maybe rushing right away to create a more open acceleration is not the right move. Maybe it is the right, right move, but not the second, right? So thinking about how do we get kids there in a very thoughtful way? I hope that answers your question. But the, we're not trying to spike. We're trying to have just really, I would even say, like, the analogy is just, when you're running in the woods, you don't necessarily want to begin by training with a marathon runner if you're just starting, right? You just, you want to make sure you're matching and you have a really nice cadence and you have a very good plan. And then you're gradually increasing stamina.
I like, well, that, the idea of meeting, also thinking about meeting kids where they are in terms of thinking about, obviously, this is not the major thing that we're thinking about because we're thinking about the academics, but the mental health effects on kids.
Yeah.
Even on kids who, maybe they don't do as well in earlier and then it gets better, which is good. But you think about the effects on kids just in elementary school if they don't do well or they know they didn't do well on testing. What does that do?
Right, right. And you just made me remember one very important thing. The hallway conversation I had today was very illuminating and it really, it's worth bringing to light here at the table. So I was speaking with a special education teacher who was getting really curious about some of the disaggregated performance, like some of the difference we're seeing for performance for students with IEPs versus students without IEPs. Our general education students, arguably all of our students are general education students and all of our students are special education students. We meet kids where they are. But he said something, he asked a question and it was around, in that pass rate, meeting proficiency standards, does that incorporate the New York State safety net? And it was such a brilliant question. And I was so excited to hear that question because I think it goes without saying, despite best efforts, okay? There are, and I'll let Jean, I'll defer to Jean around this. So I'll just stick with the one, one part. The state recognizes that for some learners, there needs to be more leeway in terms of graduation requirement on what could be considered passing. So what you're seeing up there are hard numbers of students who have met the proficiency standard, whether they have IEPs or not. However, some of the students that wouldn't have met those hard numbers of proficiency up there still ended up receiving credit, regions credit towards graduation because the state recognizes that some students do need a safety net. I want to defer to you on anything else you might want to add to that.
So I know that the results, yeah, the results that we're seeing here for students with IEPs, I would imagine that students in the region, in the state, and even nationally would have very similar results. We're looking at a very wide range of students with very varying abilities and disabilities. All 13 areas of classification are included in this testing pool. These are students who have good ability. They're on a continuum though. And, you know, those who are very, very much challenged. So the state, and I know that graduation requirements are in the process of changing over the next couple of years. But the state did recognize the discrepancies, the needs of these students in this particular pool. And because of that, they built in the safety net, the superintendent's determination, the appeal process, the low score to pass. So there are so many options in recognition of the fact that there are learning differences, learning needs.
So I just wanted to mention that. Okay. Yes.
Is my mic bringing, yes? So I do want to say thank you because I asked for this data. So thank you so much. I know it probably took a long time to get it all up there. And I really do appreciate the language, persistent achievement gaps that you mentioned four times here. Strong language, it's your commitment to data. I know we've been asking a lot of questions about data. Part of this too is, I keep hearing meeting the kids where they are. And Jean, you mentioned professional development. And a lot of it is the resources. How does the data dictate where the resources go? And so those teachers feel comfortable looking at this data and understanding there's a gap in the resources that they're giving to students with IEPs or black students. So part of your plan, I'm sure, is going to include professional development for these teachers based on your DEI audit and how teachers are going to understand. So I would like to see that in the future, how that's going to represent. And just one thing I want to add is just the inverse relationship of this numbers. I know we talk about these are small amounts of kids. But we're talking about, in some cases, 40%, 50% are proficient. But that means the inverse are not proficient.
Right.
And it represents real kids too. So we have some really great numbers in some areas. We have some really weak numbers in some areas. And I just want to make sure the resources that we're providing for, not just for the kids, but for the adults that are teaching the kids, goes to the right places. And you can kind of track the money in a way. Where's the money being spent to hit these data points? So if you could share that in your reviews that come up in the next couple of months.
So if I can add, from our perspective in special education, because we realize that there are a host of, of issues that impact student performance, like the continuum of special services, we've got to get that right, right? And that's an evolving need that changes yearly. We take a look at the cohort in each one of the grades and make a determination. It's not a rollover. We look at developing IEPs to meet our students' needs, appropriate IEPs that really target their areas of need. We look at professional development and good teaching practices. Very important, best teaching practices, the most current. So these are definitely areas that we'll continue to look at that do have an impact on student performance.
Thank you. Okay. So moving forward into social emotional data. So for the past several years, we've been administering the Panorama screener specifically to understand student perceptions of their overall social and emotional learning climate. We plan to continue administering it for grades K through 12 this year. It is administered three times a year. Though what we've recognized is the data has fits and starts of being reliable. And that's for a variety of different reasons, which I'll speak to in a moment. So it is, it is a screener that's important. It is confidential. It is not anonymous. So we can identify different students. And the results from the survey are currently available to our administrators and also to our clinicians. But we really want to become more deliberate and systematic in both gathering the data and also sharing the data. So teachers can see their individual class data, is my understanding. I'm not yet convinced that we have a strong process or part of a data review cycle to be doing that. And so that's factoring in to my next round of conversations as I'm crafting the data review cycle. And we, we, again, we had fits and starts. So despite ongoing administration over multiple years, it came in as a diagnostic screener right after, right around the pandemic. This is what we've been using as our social and emotional screener. This past spring, high school students didn't participate. In 2023 and 2024, we have a lower participation rate because of more flexibility of when it was being administered. So rather than a specific time, a specific class period, it was like given a, a range of times to be able to be administered. So it wasn't, we saw a difference in terms of how many students tested, who tested. At one point, we lost the seniors. So we lost a big portion because they went out for internships. So not everyone was taking it. So unfortunately, we don't have valid and reliable data to be able to draw some really strong conclusions well. So what we do have is a sense, we have a little sense of what's going on, which will allow us to get much more systematic in taking a look at, at our processes and also our climate.
Before, Melissa, before you move on. You might be about to address this. So sorry, but this is super frustrating. Why in the world, during a national mental health crisis, would this be so inexact in its rollout? Why in the world would high school students not part, high school students? That's, that's ninth through 12th graders not participate? ninth through 12th graders not participate? It's supposed to be administered since 2020. That's five years, three times. So that's 15 times. And I'm just so frustrated by this right now.
So as somebody who...
Yeah, let me, I mean, Teresa is spot on and exactly right. I mean, this was a fail. This was a fail for us not to administer correctly last year. We had transitions and all the rest. There's often lots of doubts in public officials and lack of trust. If we brought you data right now, we could be chasing false data and false information.
No, I appreciate you not. Thank you for the transparency.
So we are deeply committed to measuring the social emotional well-being of our students and doing it in a way that we can then have thoughtful, accurate conversations. We, you know, wanted to be very open with the board about the fail here and then not to make it worse by then having discussions around, and I'm glad you appreciate that part. So I'm agreeing with the fail and I hope, I was agreeing that we got to come up with an instrument that we can, it may be Panorama, but that we can also, this year, somehow give some feedbacks, understanding. Maybe it's, I'm thinking out loud in front of everybody here, maybe it's some focus groups, maybe it's some roundtables. That can be valid in the sense of case studies, you know, we can work through that so at least we're bringing for our high schoolers some kind of feedback while we figure out going forward how to again build a pattern of good, solid data here. So we are committed to it, we want it, we just didn't want to bring forward bad data that just leads us in, in places that aren't helpful. And it's not because we're hiding something. Other than we failed in providing this necessary instrument to our students in a sustained way that we could then report on.
Right.
I can't be more open than that.
Right, definitely. And I just think from, I'm, from a school perspective, a school leadership perspective, right? I mean, it's not that hard to administer a survey. It's not that hard to require all students to take the survey. It's really not. Like if it's, all ELA teachers must administer the Panorama survey to their students for the first 15 minutes of your ELL, ELA class today, you could potentially get every child who was present that day to fill out the survey. It's just, this shows that it's not, it hasn't been that important in, in our district. And that's scary. Because anecdotally, when you talk to people in our district, there are too many children who have big mental health issues. And so it's, it's just unacceptable. I absolutely appreciate the transparency. We're all here to acknowledge it. It's September. When is the next time this is administered? And how is it going to be required of each student?
I can actually give you the exact dates soon. I know I didn't have it at my fingertips, but I, but we've, I want to begin by acknowledging everything you said and sharing the frustration. And we are fixing it. And I am coming to the table as someone who is so personally and professionally invested in this, to the point of on my own, went through a Breathe for Change program on yoga, social emotional learning, and mindfulness to get my certification in that because I think it is critically important and it is very aligned with being available for strong learning and having positive cultures. Okay, so I just wanted to not only hold space for what you just said, I'm sharing that with you. And so we are fixing it because it is, it is quite important that we have accurate data over time, that we can look at how we're doing in all of these different spaces.
Melissa, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Regarding the three years, I mean, sorry, the three times that the data is administered, is that that you ask the same questions three times and look at the change within the same year?
Yes.
Okay. So, and then, I mean, I share Teresa's year frustration because every bullet here signifies a year from 2022 to present that there were gaps in administering this survey. Personally, I think three times a year is way too much. I think you can do qualitative and quantitative questioning with students throughout the year and you have a survey that is a snapshot on April of that year and you look at all the competencies you want to ask questions at, and then you look at that year over year. I also agree, it's really not hard to get, in New York City, most of the schools get 100%, over 95%. And to say that Hastings with 1,600 kids, we can't get 100% on a survey that could be just a Google form or something very easy to track. It doesn't, you don't even need an outside vendor to do this for you. You can kind of have 20 questions and you could review it yourself. So it is really frustrating. In fall 2022, middle and high school students did not participate. 23, 24, low percentage rates, 25. I remember last year when you presented this, something was like 20% of students took it.
High school.
High school.
If I'm remembering correctly.
Yeah, it was, and I remember, I wanted to go back and like watch the meeting to see what the questions we asked, but I didn't have time to do that. But it is, it's really frustrating and we want to know how our students are doing emotionally. And we have no idea. And it correlates to the VADER and the DASA in a way as well, but we can't make the correlation because we don't have any real data.
I think Melissa's saying that she agrees with you.
I am agreeing.
I know, but I...
I am.
I share your frustration and it is, we have nothing to look back in the last four years that we can talk about the social emotional state of the students in this district.
We have this and it's not good enough, right? So we have to make it better.
So where does this live? With what department?
So this is administered at the building level. So I'm going to explain. So here's how we've streamlined some additional things. So the leadership team met over the summer. We really zoomed in on how important it is for all of the reasons we just talked about, that we have ongoing understanding of social emotional data in the district. And so we have a shared understanding of the need to administer three times a year. So I then put back out to everyone, let's assume now, this has to happen, so let's pick the assessment windows that make sense. So we collaboratively designed three different assessment windows. Then the building leaders have determined a date, a time, and periods in the schedule for administration. And so I've requested precision, whereas it's not, you know, just make sure every student takes it or, you know, put it to them to fill out by a certain date, that we, we actually say, here's the date, the time, the class, like we're all administering this, okay? We adjusted the spring assessment window. We know we lose seniors for the senior internship, so we have established a separate date for seniors to take it. It's, it's not that much of a difference in terms of timing. So with other students, we're getting them right more towards the very end of the school year. With our seniors, we're doing it before they leave for their senior internship. And then we have a leadership team professional calendar that we all share. The dates are in there. They're bright. They, we all have them. So some of these structures were previously in place and some were not. But we all got together, and this is clear, so that there's an understanding that the expectation is three times a year and it's not misunderstood and that we're all rowing in the same direction.
I would just, not to pile on, but I share the frustration of everybody. I can't, there's probably a dozen times where social, emotional, the need for additional, you know, people, psychologists, for example, right? Like we hear from teachers, if there was one thing you could add, what would it be? Psychologist is like top of the, top of the list, right? So like this, not having info doesn't support what is the feeling on the ground, right? And what's the feeling of the staff? And it really is not acceptable to have, you know, just a lack of data that gives you no baseline whatsoever. I'm wondering why the three times a year, that's not required, right? Do we decide that?
Well, we decided on it because the first is a baseline, the second is to see if we're improving in terms of how we're doing.
If you can't compare one year to the next because there's huge gaps, it's, it's not effective. It's, it's a waste.
But was your question around why we would do it three times?
Right. If you, if you're doing it three times, it's for the intention of drilling into, this question went up, I wonder why. But if you don't have comparable data from year to year, it's, it's all useless. It's a waste of everybody's time.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I feel like we have general ideas of themes of things we need to be working on, but we don't have enough of a sample size to have that be valid or reliable. But the, specifically, the reason we wanted to do it three times a year is, number one, Panorama recommends that, but the reason is, so the first is where are kids coming in, what's the baseline? The second is, as we're looking at these different areas that we're measuring, are we getting better, are we getting worse? And then finally, it's how are we culminating? Like are we seeing a positive arc across the school year? Are we seeing certain things go up and down? Are certain areas fairly consistent across a year? So that's, that's the intention of the three times. That's the theory of the three times.
But we haven't seen it actually be useful until, until such time that we can get an actual baseline with a full, you know, collective. Could we see the questions?
Panorama is saying that it's, that they, they don't release their questions, but let me, let me look into that. How about that?
Okay. Is it electronic?
Yes.
I'm just curious, like, I don't know what they're asking, so.
But we, we have a sense of the questions.
Yeah, when we've reported out, we put it into, you know, there are 10, 12 different broad categories. So, I mean, there is a, this was administered a lot. There is a lot of data. The issue is consistently, what, what consistent lines can you draw? And at the building level, you have two thirds new sets of leadership that are focused, two thirds heavily focused on data and evidence. And given, and so they're deeply committed and they're trying to get a calendar of administration here that makes sense. I think there's a lot of logic to pull back from three to a lesser number, get a little more oomph out of that, blend in maybe, you know, some follow-up discussions. So we're building that out. When all said and done, we can, I think, still go back in and probe a little bit about what did that large, because we have a lot of data sitting there and then we can at least pull some threads from it once we have something.
Is this the one that had the trusted adult?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know we always think about that as like a driver question of other things. So I'm just wondering what the other kind of questions around it are.
Do you feel a sense of longing?
Yes. Let me see what I can get for you.
Are you engaged? How engaged are you in the...
So the dates, November 6th, February 5th, seniors are taking it May 1st, and then K through 11, May 18th. And so that's dancing in between state testing, making sure we're not overlapping with the STAR window, we don't want to have survey fatigue. So those are the dates that were collaboratively agreed on.
So I feel like I just read a murder mystery and we gave you the murder at the end. So you, you will get data this year. You will get data this year. And I think the emphasis you as a board are bringing tonight gives energy to that data. And I think from those results, we, we can also tease out some insights for you. And I hope you don't mind, I learned from a great person, the policy, you give the answer at the beginning and then you fill in. So the answer at the beginning, and I'll take ownership of this, should have been, we will have data for you this year. We're giving this assessment three times. We can't yet give you data here on this date tonight. That would have changed the whole conversation.
No, I knew we weren't getting data.
No, 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 but meaning, we should have been clear right up front, here are the dates for administration. We are going to have data for you on this vitally important, all of the building leaders have agreed to the calendar Melissa just gave you. Right now, that longitudinal is a little bit in question, but the things we all, you know, we will, can get to that. So, and I think then we can go back and try and tease out from before, is there anything that give us a clue at some, so, if that helps.
And then...
And Melissa's done yeoman work to get this sorted out and keep us moving forward.
I guess that's why I asked too, whose responsibility is this? I mean, is, is this guidance, right? Is it, I mean, ultimately, it's you, just like there's, like many, many things are falling to you and maybe, maybe this, this is a guidance or a psychology thing or, you know, something, but...
We're all working together on it. And I know that's the diplomatic answer, but it's the one I'll stand by.
Okay.
Which is that we need to get better at it. We're all part of a team and everyone needs to take ownership of their piece. So I can put systems and structures into place and I can be the heavy on certain, certain areas of, look, we have to do X and Y and Z. And then other people have to take certain things and run with them and we have to have a checks and balances. And I know that we are all working together on this. So, so guidance is involved, the building principals are involved, I'm involved, there are different pieces to all of this and we just have to make it better.
And then have you had discussions about, I know now this year you'll be able to present us with the numbers, right? You know, 40% of students feel engaged, 30%, right? In a more comprehensive way, that's a better picture of what's going on because there'll be greater number of participation this year. But, but are you meeting, or do you have dates on the calendar to meet about then what?
That will be part of the data review cycle.
I'm sorry, what?
The so what and the now what? Like what are we doing about it?
So what, right.
Yeah, and the now what.
On a systemic level and also on an individual level? Who are you flagging? What, what happens next? If a child is reporting concerning things, then what, you know?
Yes.
Because we have a district to take care of and a community and then the individuals in that community.
Which is why I'm glad it's anonymous, but it's, I'm sorry, confidential but not anonymous. We can see who the kids are.
Right.
Whereas we cannot do that when we partner with the Village for their survey, which is a very important survey that we do every two years.
About drug, drug use and that stuff?
Drug use, right, exactly. At drug and alcohol use. That is a very important survey. We deliberately did not put in certain types of questions because we want to make sure we're doing that in a context where we can identify who the kids are and we can get in there and be helpful. So, okay.
What is the percentage that Panorama says you need for the data to be good?
Useful.
I don't know. I think it's like 30% response.
I don't know. I, I don't know.
What was your question?
What percentages, what percentages Panorama suggests that the data is useful or good?
Meaningful, yeah.
Meaningful. And further than that, like what is your goal for November 6th?
100% is my goal. I suspect we'll get, we'll have a couple of kids that are absent and we may have a little bit of glitch in the retakes, but we are, my goal is 100%.
And because it's confidential, you can isolate the students that didn't take it and give them the opportunity to.
Right. And force them to sit in the guidance office and take the test.
And they will put very high scores.
Which might have a bias effect on the SEO moment there.
They will feel, the positive feelings will be very, very high.
I forget I said the word force, but, you know, it's just so important. There's not many ways we can check in with a large group of students and this is a low hanging fruit. And then from there, you can triage.
Yes. You're not saying anything I don't agree with. And I know we're, we're making light of something that's quite heavy and we just really need to fix it. So, thank you. Okay, behavioral data. So I have been working with the three assistant principals and the IWG to coordinate a parent presentation around the Dignity Act, similar to the one that was done for the Board of Education, but bringing in the family. So we are working very hard to synchronize our calendars so we can align around that. So I don't want to belabor this, you've seen this before. Recently in June, there was a presentation to the Board of Education around the Dignity for All Student Act, Dignity for All Students Act. I will just reiterate very quickly, not every insult is covered under the Dignity Act, not every report of bullying is covered under the Dignity Act. It is really around founded incidents that are, that rise to the level of material incidents. They are founded, they were reported, they were investigated, and those are the Dignity Act violations that you will see in the, reflected in the numbers. And those are the ones that are reported up to New York State. So VADER, so let me just back up for a moment. So we're going to be talking about a couple of different frameworks tonight. So the state framework, the Dignity for All Students Act... So the state framework, the Dignity for All Students Act, also some people refer to as DASSA, is one framework we're working with, the state one. The district framework is we have a code of conduct. Okay, so Dignity Act violations also fall under violations of the code of conduct. So that's a second framework. The third thing that we'll be talking about is VADER, violent and disruptive incidents. And these things get reported to the state. And you can see all of the different categories for reporting. They're all very serious. And one of them there is intimidation, harassment, harassment menacing or bullying, also known to fall under DASSA, under the Dignity Act. All right, so we had this past school year, seven founded VADER incidents. Three of them were in the category of assault with serious physical injury. Four of them were in the category of intimidation, harassment, menacing or bullying. And three of those four were founded Dignity Act violations. Okay? And that's consistent with what we've seen in 2023, 24 and the 2024, 25 school year. So there they are. So you can take a look at it in terms of numbers. Those are the seven VADER incidents. Three of them were bias related and therefore they were also founded under the Dignity Act, founded DASSA incidents. So you can see that there. All right? And so getting into, getting into this a little bit more. So I like to think of this as every square is a rhombus, but not every rhombus is a square. Meaning, every founded violation of the Dignity Act is reported under VADER. However, not all VADER incidents are DASSA violations, Dignity Act violations. Okay?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you have no DASSA violations that were not also VADER incidents?
No DASSA incidents that were correct.
So all of our DASSA incidents were considered?
Violent and disruptive and reported up to the state.
No, no material incidents on bullying, intimidation, menacing or harassment that weren't deemed violent?
One, I believe, one. And that is reflected, sorry, I'm, which way am I going? So if you look, four were under intimidation, harassment, menacing or bullying, and three were founded under DASSA, reported to the state with the VADER report.
So that's, the four were code of conduct violations?
Correct.
And three of them met the requirements of material?
Correct, yes. Okay. And here it is again. I won't read it to you. So one of them was a violation of the code of conduct. It didn't rise to a material incident under DASSA, but it was dealt with and it was documented. All right. So VADER and DASSA incidents are all violations under the code of conduct. And one of the things that we did this past spring, and I want to credit Dan Waldeck for taking the lead on this and recognizing that we could do better with our local data, not just our state reportable data. We refined our e-school data incident categories to align with the building discipline codes. So we have our code of conduct and then each building has a discipline code that has the type of incident and the consequence. Well, in our e-school system, which is our student management system of how we keep track of things, the codes that the application defaulted to didn't match what was in our building codes. And so what ended up happening was people would describe certain things, but it wouldn't get coded in the way that made it easy to track patterns and trends. So we worked with our data coordinator, Adriana Boudreaux, who then worked with the application to pump in what we needed to make it Hastings specific, so that we can now do a better job of tracking things that are not the state reportable incidents. So we can now start to, and we've just implemented this, start to run reports, being able to see, okay, in our building discipline codes, these are the types of things we're seeing. You know, what does it fall under? And then how do we make sure we enter it that way with an e-school data so that we can get a better job, have a better understanding of themes and patterns that are happening?
Could you give an example of that, Melissa?
Sure. So, I mean, this is probably a very bad example, but the first thing that comes to mind, because we were just talking about assault, like, if a student pushes another student in the category, in the hallway, and it's not a state-reported VADER incident, in our building discipline code, they call it something. You know, they may call it physical harm. I'm doing this from memory, so forgive me. But basically, each building, so if it happened at Hillside and a student pushed a student in the hallway, and it happened at the middle school and a student kicked a student in the hallway, and at the high school, someone punched a student in the hallway, maybe, I mean, none of it's good, but maybe it didn't rise to the level of state-reportable, suspendable offense. It was an inappropriate move under the code of conduct. When the incidents get logged, they can all put it in that category. So then we can start to see, oh, these are the physical incidents. We're seeing physical, right? And so whatever the, whatever the different parameters are in the building-based codes, those are the categories we put into e-school so that we can start to see. It's not a perfect science. We don't, we don't really, it's less important perhaps that we see this one hit, this one kick, this one punch. But perhaps it's a lot more important to see, we have a lot of physical incidents that are happening, right? So we're able to now better track some of those trends, if that's helpful.
Got you.
Okay. All right, so we're refining our data data collection. And then I would like to share with you code of conduct violations that have resulted either in an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension. So this is what we're seeing for the current school year. And in the next few slides, the data really speak for themselves. Taking a look at in-school suspension versus out-of-school suspensions. We're not seeing a lot of suspensions philosophically. We want to make sure that we are not over-suspending kids as a consequence. We want kids to be learning. We also want to make sure that we are holding the bar with making sure students are accountable and we're following our own code of conduct and our discipline codes. We are seeing most of the suspensions are happening in the middle school. That's not atypical for districts, but we are seeing that in Hastings. And then the types of incidents resulting in suspension, because we had such few suspensions, I was able to just get in there and track. Whereas, again, with local incidents, we'll be doing a better job automating that. That's very new for us, but we're getting there. You can see we had two assault, physical injury, four intimidation, harassment, menacing or bullying. And then in the high school, one assault, physical injury. And here is the disaggregated data on aggressors. We tried to do this by victims and it wasn't very clean to do because in some cases, the alleged aggressor would have multiple victims. It may be something that happened on a grade. Certain things were coded in the system, certain things weren't coded in the system. So we, again, I'm really curious too about disaggregated data related to victims. But right now, we had a really solid way of seeing aggressors and taking a look at demographics for the aggressors. On the far right-hand column, you'll see the number of incidents. So for example, where you see a one, a one and a one, if you move to the left, all of those students, it's three different students were involved in that one incident. With the second incident, you're seeing two students were involved. Same thing with the third. And then you're singing, seeing a bunch of singletons in incidents four through seven. But that just gives you a sense of some disaggregated data 2024, 2025. I also wanted to bring it back a little bit. I anticipated a question on more longitudinal data. So I tried to get ahead of that one. It's a wise question. So I built that in. So 23, 24, you can see the data there. 22, 23.
So that means nine incidents?
It's mostly, it's like 95% male, right?
That's the big theme that jumped out for me.
Right, but perhaps it's because, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of mean girl stuff happening too. I have two girls. So maybe we're not calling it something that, I don't know.
So this is the one thing that I, you know, when I can separate from the data and get on the balcony, this is why I love this so much, looking at information like this, because it leads to more questions. Like, that's very curious to me. Why is it that we're seeing that in terms of our pattern? Right? 2020, 2021, this is where we don't have academic testing data. This is right around COVID. But we were absolutely dealing with other things during COVID, even with students not being in the school environment. There were still interactions that were happening, so. All right, so I already spoke to the patterns on victims. So I would like to make sure that we keep a better eye on that. Primarily males, as you said, Teresa?
Aggressors.
Aggressors. No, we had, that was the aggressor data.
This is victims.
Victims, yeah, the people who were targeted, yes. That was hard to track and I want to make sure that we're getting better at that. In three of the five years, more than half the students were students with IEPs, especially in 2021 and 2022, 23. And across the five years, we had 36 incidents involving 42 student aggressors. And here you can see the breakdown of all of those numbers. And the numbers reflect the number of student aggressors. And again, when you're thinking about students that may fall into different groups, they may be double counted. So I just want to point that out.
I didn't see anything reported in terms of sexual stuff.
We don't collect data in our e-school repository on sexuality. Is that what you mean?
Sexual harassment, student-on-student sexual harassment. Is that how, how you would say it?
Yeah, so there are certain things that fall under the Dignity Act, under intimidation, harassment and bullying, under sex, sexuality or gender. So some of that is caught up in the DASSA. But I think what you're referring to is, are you referring to founded Title IX violations?
I don't know.
Yeah, so for, for the most part, when things come up in that arena, it is investigated in more than one way. And so there are Dignity Act violations that would hit upon that in terms of gender, sex, sexuality.
Inappropriate touching, like peer-to-peer inappropriate touching?
Right, and that also falls under something else, right? So there are different, so certain things can rise to a Title IX violation, for example, and also be a Dignity Act violation. So it's not just the one thing. Okay, so building on what we recommended last year, we're emphasizing record-keeping, making sure that we do better with our logging of local incidents. I know Dan already sat with Lauren in terms of transition planning with the new, with that transition in terms of coding different incidents, enhancing our longitudinal data collection, enhancing our disaggregation, especially when it comes to victims or what we consider targets. I use the word targets with victims, right? And then automating some of that reporting to the state. Okay, questions?
Hi, thank you for presenting this. And I know some of this I sent over mail this morning or this afternoon. I want to believe that Hastings is is an incredibly safe place for our students. And and I, and I'm obviously, I love seeing such low numbers, right? Four, four incidents, VADER over the course of year three, dignity incidents. But what I come back to, and I kind of spent some time looking at some other districts and how they're reporting it and, you know, the statewide information. And it seems as if, when I'm looking at other districts of our size, of our demographics, that there are much higher reporting of numbers for certain districts. Some districts don't, you know, report low like ours. I struggle to believe that Hastings truly only had three dignity incidents in the last year. Not because I, you know, I don't, anecdotally, I feel like I've heard of enough that would be way more than the three that are reported. So what I, what I'm trying to figure out is, and I guess, you know, better understanding the reporting process, how students, parents, staff are reporting this and how it's going from a founded incident, you know, and all of that. But I'm so curious to understand why those numbers are so low and what I'm not seeing, because I feel like the numbers should be higher.
Yeah, that's a fair question. So I feel like it's a very layered question. I'll do my best to chip away at it. So I always hold those wonderings in terms of, are we getting everything? Are we capturing it all? And that comes with, is everything being reported? Is everything reported being addressed? And that I'm quite confident on, and I can say why in a moment. And then also, there are incidents, and this is more of a statement than a question, there are incidents that are code of conduct violations that don't rise to the level of material incidents under the Dignity Act, which is sustained incidents over time that would be considered bullying or a singular incident that is so significantly impactful that it could be considered an act of bullying, even in one singular incident. It's hard for me to know in terms of other places. I know you mentioned similar-sized districts. I think that matters. I know some districts have multiple elementary schools and we have the one elementary school. So I would need to do a little bit more on that. But I think that where I'm landing on this is, we have some really tight communication feedback loops. So when incidents are happening, I'm not concerned that when an incident is raised, that it's not being investigated. That I am very clear on. So there are feedback loops on those things all the time. And when something comes through that rises to the level of a potential Dignity Act violation, people give me a heads up. I don't personally investigate it because I'm the appeals level, but I know what's going on. Like, I'm in the know that this is happening. I do know that recently, and this dates, predates your tenure as a trustee, but we had been thoroughly scrubbed by the Department of Human Rights, actually. And they collected all of our data and they looked at everything. And they looked at how we collected things, even our local incidents. They looked at the demographic breakdowns. They looked at our paperwork for Dignity Act. And so they, they, they gave us a clear, they said, and this is Department of Human Rights. I mean, this is no slouch organization. They take this extremely seriously. So it comes down to, it makes me wonder in terms of, does it rise, rising to the level of a material incident? Like, when we're dealing with human behaviors, it's a little bit imperfect. The important part is, you notice there's a behavior, you suspect there's a behavior, you investigate it, you make sure you take action on it, you catalog it, and then you report it. And you make sure that everything is done in a lockstep way. I don't know, other than the fact that, you know, maybe certain things are emphasized in other places as singular incidents, perhaps? I don't know. But my, my suspicion might be that certain people in certain places code certain things one way, whereas in other places, there's a little bit of variation, but not much. But what's uniform is everyone sees it as. But what's uniform is everyone sees it as a major problem. Everyone catches it as a code of conduct violation. Everybody investigates, and everybody in good faith does their best effort to report. So I, I feel like I don't have a great answer for you, because I'm not sure other people's approach to it. But I do know that in our buildings, we have, our Dignity Act coordinators have all been trained, and I ask them to do that annually, so they're up to speed on that. Our staff, in terms of Dignity Act, everyone has to have that to have your certification. You have to have training, and they call it DASSA training. But, and same thing with mandated child abuse and reporting, and they're continually updating that. So now I'll just stop talking, because I feel like I'm spinning a little bit, because I'm not sure. I feel like I want to make sure, like you, we're capturing everything accurately.
A hundred percent, no, and I, and I appreciate that. I think, I'm, I'm always looking for the disconnect, right? I'm always trying to figure out, right? And so I understand what the teachers are doing, I understand what you're doing as an administrator, and, and that's reassuring. I guess my next question would be, are the students aware of their role, right? When they feel bullied or harassed? Are they aware of the necessary steps that they have to take to report this? Are they aware of, of, of the Dignity Act? And how aware are they? And are they aware of what constitutes that? Now, I understand that they're going to be reporting certain things. But perhaps, do the students know that if X happens, and that is technically part of the Dignity Act? They should be reporting that, as opposed to maybe something that is in the code of conduct that might be seen differently or understood differently?
Yeah, I'm quite sure that Dan did last year, sorry.
I mean, you got two to your left.
Students. Yes.
They did the same thing.
You're on the spot, you don't have to answer.
Not to put you on the spot.
So the question is, how aware of you are you of? I mean, I'll say one thing, we try and communicate it as simply as possible, code of conduct. And then, once you're not treated well or seeing stuff, we want you to report it. But we may be falling short there. And, you know, Ella, Joaquin, don't be shy, please.
Yeah, I would say from the student perspective, like, in, in the case of reporting these incidents, I don't think that we see, there's, there's much of a difference between this, like, code of conduct or DASSA, if we're going to report an incident. The first thing that we're thinking about is getting it to teachers and counselors, and not about whether it's falling under the code of conduct or DASSA, like, like whatever consequence or incident filing it's going to go under. And, you know, as we saw in the presentation, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately, a lot of these acts like DASSA are sort of public. Like, I'm sure Ella and I, we both remember that these incidents that are happening, like, oftentimes, they're not reported to administrators or counselors by victims, but mostly because, like, they're shared on social media, or they're leaked out to the student body, and then someone there takes the initiative to, to report it. But really, there's, there's, there's not a big distinguishability between DASSA and the code of conduct from our perspective.
So, Joaquin, that's actually really interesting. I appreciate that, thank you. So are you saying that certain incidents, students aren't reporting? Is that what you meant, or?
No, I mean, I'm remembering a particular incident right now, where the victim did not report the incident. And it was, it was actually, like, unfortunately popularized among a couple of students. And, but the whole school knew about it before administrators knew about it. So it was, it was shared online, and it was, it was a huge, you know, again, unfortunately, it was a huge event between the students, so, yeah, there wasn't, like, it, it, the, the, the victim wasn't reporting it. Like, someone, you know.
So that's, that's helpful. It's also my concern that I was speaking to before, which is that I'm actually quite confident that whenever an incident is reported, there is action taken on the incident. That's not, so I think what you just described is, is interesting. And so trying to work together with the students to make sure that we are creating strong conditions so that we can get around that somehow and help.
Great value for you hanging here tonight, because it's two very powerful points from both of you, which is, and you wanted disconnects. A disconnect is, as is true in many schools, the students are reticent to come forward. Actually, three points. Two, social media is not our friend. And then it escalates, intensifies. It also, though, can be a way to grab something and then, hey, bring that forward. And three, we overcomplicate this by, is it DASSA, is it code? It's bad behavior. Tell us the bad behavior, we will sort out, whether it's code of conduct or DASSA. Right? And, and that's, we just, we make it so complicated. Bad behavior, build the trust, you'll come forward. And, and now another point is, if we ask for anonymous reporting, it doesn't help us. And some, because, once you get an anonymous report, we don't know how to chase that. And that's where trying to build the trust, where there's enough place to go. So you get really powerful insights.
Yeah, I think it's really great what you said about leaving the responsibility to the administrators, whether a violation, it goes under the DASSA or code of conduct policies. Like, to students right now, the way I think most of us view DASSA is that it's there in the code of conduct. It's there, we see it, but it's not really a separate thing, which is fine, because we're going to report the incidents, and we shouldn't be worried about what's going to happen. We should be really worried about making sure that it's known, and making sure action's taken, and that administrators are going to file it under whatever, and get the appropriate consequences.
Right, thank you.
The power of the bystander too, right?
Right.
The power of the bystander, that's often the person that brings it to light, yeah?
Yes.
I have a question about that incident. I have no, no knowledge of this. Did it ever come to an administrator that, what, that this incident was being shared online and publicized?
Uh, yes.
That's all you need to say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, so then I guess my question, I mean, by the way, thank you for explaining that, and for explaining that. So then I guess my question is, would we collectively say that right now, we have a culture of accountability? And listen, I'm not saying the students need to solve, right? The administrator's job is, but do we feel that the students feel that there's a culture of accountability within the district, where not only do they feel comfortable sharing, but they feel empowered to share, and, and feel empowered to, to speak up for everything that we reflect in our district?
I, I think there's very mixed feelings, and I think it's by population. I think some students feel that they can bring forward, and I want Ella and Joaquin to check me on this, please. And they know they're two voices, not a hundred, they're not sixteen-hundred voices. But I, I've been here long enough, and I spend a lot of time listening to students. And I think there's some who feel that they can bring it forward, and it gets addressed. And I think there's some that are feeling it's ignored. And I think that unfortunately goes across race and ethnicity lines, and it may go across gender lines. We have to work on that. The key is how we understand that we really want to be listening, regardless of our race, regardless of our ethnicity. We are fundamentally here as humans. We gotta, we gotta get that trust built. And we're pretty good, but we gotta get better. I, I, but, yeah, check me, or be truthful, please.
I think in the high school, that's, that's certainly true. But I think it's also important to differentiate between the, the three buildings, like Hillside, Farragut, and there's the high school, right? So for this incident, it was actually in the middle school that it happened, when I was at middle school. But like, if an incident happens in, at Hillside, or in the younger grades of Farragut, like, most, some of the kids don't have phones, right? So, like, yes, there is, in the high school, you know, you're, you're saying that some students may not feel empowered to show us information. But in, with the power of the bystander in the high school, like, information in, in some incidents is going to be spread out to the whole school. But when you're thinking about Farragut or Hillside, it's mostly going to stay between, it, it might just stay between the aggressor and the victim. So I think it's important that we see that, like, in the high school, these incidents are, are being reported a lot. But in the middle school and Hillside, what are we missing?
This does go hand-in-hand with the Panorama survey. And, you know, if only twenty or thirty percent of students have a trusted adult that they can go to, then this, this kind of reporting to an administrator or a teacher is not going to happen. So we can really use that, these two things go hand-in-hand.
You read my mind.
Can I ask the students, what kind of lessons have you received as students on what is bullying? What is intimidation? What is harassment? How to report bullying? Is that anything you've received in class?
I would say, I would say we haven't received a lot of, like, there hasn't been a lot of, like, back and forth between us, and teachers and counselors, on what this, this stuff really looks like. I remember, like, Farragut and Hillside, this was much more ingrained into us, like, creating a really, a great school culture that everyone can feel safe and have a good learning environment. But I would say in the high school, there's, there's not really as much of that going on. Students know that they can report, that they should report incidents to teachers like that. But, you know, as we've all been talking about, like, if students don't have a trusted adult, that's when the break fails, because if you've been at, you know, the, the Hastings School District for eight years, and you've had this, this great training, I would say it's really, really great. I have two younger brothers, Hillside and Farragut, both of them. You know, I'm confident that they're getting this ingrained into them to report these incidents, to know what these incidents look like. But again, once we get to the high school level, it's, it becomes, there's a lot more independence to it. Teachers are less around, there's, there's more stuff happening outside of school between students. So it's really about having someone who will listen, and students knowing that there is someone who will listen.
So could we provide some level of training for students to normalize reporting procedures? A yearly training, some kind of aspect that they know? Because when I looked online, there's one form, right? That's, can fill out.
Yes.
That's not really accessible for maybe our younger learners. But are, that's the one way we report bullying? And it can't be anonymous either? I'm a little hung up on that piece, too?
So we have, so a couple things. So the, at the elementary school, there are lessons associated with the counseling, the counseling lessons around bullying behaviors and telling, you know, telling an adult, making sure that, I mean, the younger ones wouldn't necessarily be filling out a form. They would be going to their person, their teacher, their, the recess monitor, somebody who's with them on a daily basis. So they are receiving explicit training at the elementary school as part of, I believe it's Julianne Snyder who's doing that as part of her counseling program. At the middle school, following some things that happened in the not-too-distant past, I know that Dan Waldak brought students together in the middle school to talk about the Dignity Act and to talk about reporting procedures. I believe that was last year. So I will check in on him to see if, what the plan is to make that a more regular, ongoing thing. In addition to anything that gets built in in terms of instructionally in the program. But I know that Dan brought people forward and did an assembly for students on that. At the high school, I'm not sure that anything has been done.
They do an opening, but part of the opening assembly is on policies, procedures, on how well it's, you know, paid attention to, no matter what high school you're in. But it's, there's a standard opening.
Through, it's code of, they go through the code of conduct.
I sat in on two of the four grades just to listen. So it happens, and then it's that dilemma. And the other thing is, I mean, we, opportunity costs for every minute. So when we spend time on this, which may be really, really important, what are we giving up here? And particularly in high school, where, you know, we have very, all of our students are in their own ways driven. Teachers are driven, so there are choices. But these are all really good points. But, but the standard, back to school, hear the rules, that goes on. How effective that is, from what, you know, Ella and Joaquin have shared, is a good point.
Yeah, I don't think there's an under-reporting issue in terms of staff. I think it's, like you mentioned, the students not feeling comfortable coming forward to say that, I'm being harassed, I'm being bullied. And in terms of potential material incidents versus material incidents, that could change when more reporting happens. More reports aren't a bad thing. I consider more reports a good thing, because we can pinpoint the need and where the behaviors are happening, and how we can address it. But if the kids don't feel comfortable coming up to us and saying that I'm hearing these slurs, people are misgendering me, all the types of classes, because that's happening. We all know the kids, their language is, they're all using it intentionally to harm another kid. That's what kids do. But if they don't feel comfortable to report it, we're not really helping those kids. So we have to create a culture where reporting is the norm, not just sitting with it, and then having all these issues arise, you know, and then we're not catching it on our SELs. We're going to start catching it there. So, yeah, I think we have to just uplift the kids to be able to report to us.
And just to add to, yeah, I agree, Bill. I mean, I think that it's tough, right? You do the, the thing at the beginning of the year, and you give the presentation, and we know that information is perishable. I, I'm curious if even, if there's just a lower-stakes version of this, right? A reminder in the morning when the students do the, the daily announcement, or just something to include in a student newspaper, or, you know, or something that, you know, just ways to, to be consistent so that the information is less perishable for the students. I don't, I'm not suggesting, right, you know, and I don't necessarily think you need a huge program, you know, to, to hammer it home. I'm just curious, you know, ways, you know, and, and I agree with, with Dave, that I, I feel in a lot of ways that the reporting needs to be, you know, led by the students, and that's how we end up understanding these, these problems, and they are problems, better. I appreciate everything the administration and the, and the staff is doing. I just, I can't believe the numbers are so, you know, what they are, you know, in, in good faith. I just don't think we're that great.
Well, and it's also about teaching self-advocacy.
Correct.
That's what this reporting is really about, self-advocacy and advocacy for your community members. And it, it's interesting that you, you feel that there is less emphasis on this in the high school, and that, that's where we're seeing most of the mental health breakdown, and, and most of the social media bullying, and, you know, it's just social media, because obviously, that's when kids are getting on social media. Some in middle school, but kind of everyone these days in high school. But if there's not a culture around self-advocacy for when you're being bullied or harassed, and, and reporting, then we will continue to see these mental health breakdowns.
So I have a thought, a way to sort of move us forward, is I, I think there's some really good questions here for me to bring to the leadership team, and sort of a almost case-study discussion, to say, we don't necessarily have hard data, but you all are very smart, you've got a lot of professional judgment. Here are the kind of questions that have come up. This has been a very powerful set of discussions, and thank you, Ella and Joaquin, for really hanging in there. To say, you know, where are we? You know, zero to a hundred, where are we in this culture of, of students feeling silent or not? I actually think our students have a strong voice, but do they have around some of these types of things? You know, I've been here long enough to know that I, the students are very clear when they come in my little roundtables. They lay it out, they're not shocked. But I think there's, this is a little different topic. So I think with leadership, sort of tease that out, sort that out, and won't be tomorrow. But in the next several meetings, come back to you and say, here's what the leadership will be saying, and here's some thoughts they have on it. Because you've got some very thoughtful people there, and also, they've got fresh eyes on, on Hastings. So, yeah, that could be useful, if that's helpful.
I think it'd be great to even hear from them, not to put them on the spot, but just to really have this be a roundtable discussion, that is a public forum slash board meeting, and to put some social media language in there, in the assault, I mean, I know, that's state definitions. It's not our Hastings definitions, but I guess it's all cyberbullying, because so much of the world of hate speech and hate is happening through social media for our high schoolers.
Joaquin, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, like, if, if we were to focus on future action, I think it's important that, you know, as much as we're talking about this, this lack of reporting, I think the student culture around, like, reporting these types of incidents is really, really great. I think that if, I, I know so many people in the school, so many groups in the school, and if people see something, they are going to say something. And if we wanted to focus on a future action plan, I mean, this is just me. I would, I would recommend focusing more on the victim, because there's so many students who will report what's going on, but when you're the victim to an aggressor, when you're being harassed, when you're being bullied, all that can go out of the window. And I think it's really important that we recognize that. If, if there is a victim, or someone, or that we teach people that, if you are a victim of something, you need to recognize it, and tell administrators, tell teachers, tell your counselors that you're going to be okay, because if you stay silent, and if there's not like a huge school-wide incident, it may not be reported. Because if stuff gets out, we are going to report it. The student body is going to report it, because we will. If we see something that's going on, we're going to, we're going to say that it's going on, and someone will. But when it, when it gets down to the level of, of just a victim, things might be different. might be different.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to move on. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm going to skip ahead. We'll do the update on the evacuate, the September 4th evacuation and reunification. Pardon me? We're going to go to public comment now and then we'll go back to the rest of the agenda. So we're going to move into public comment now and I just want to remind people to please introduce yourself and that you have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Jennifer Love.
You gotta go close to it. Give it to them.
No.
No, you gotta be on it. They can't hear you at home if you're not on the mic.
So last week, Jennifer Love, 150 Overlook. Last week, my husband and I, we went to, back to school night. It was our last one and we went to resource room and there were six other parents there and we waited for the teacher and we waited and we waited and we waited for the teacher. And this happened to have been the teacher, Ms. Dolan, who just resigned. So we didn't know if it's protocol that another teacher would come in. We really thought, and all eight adults there thought, given all the changes in special ed, leadership has to come to this room. They have to come and make a point of talking to us and telling us, your kids are going to be okay, your kids are going to be taken care of. Nobody came. So another teacher must have heard us lamenting and she came in and she profusely apologized. I think for all of the parents there, I can speak for my husband and myself, it was another reminder of just the district leadership not stepping up to the plate. You know, over the past months, we have witnessed the special ed department decompensate. Tesfa, now followed by Ms. Dolan, there was another case manager who left right before school started and a fourth who moved over to the history department. A wonderful promotion for her, but another loss for our kids. These are all teachers and mentors who made our kids feel normal, whether it was being in a collab class or having resource room. And we know that even if you're not in special ed, it's very hard to feel normal in high We also always heard, my husband and I, that Hastings had trouble with special ed and we were thrust into it only when our daughter went into high school, so quite late. We knew there was a lawsuit, we knew there were a lot of complaints, not much action, and we were really concerned. What we found these past three years though exceeded our expectations and that really was because three of the four people who are no longer in the special ed department, two of whom are leaving the district, or left rather, the district. And there's a great void. We have no idea why these people weren't considered or promoted within the ranks. These are people who had the education and the credibility and that is the way to create stability. Stability for our kids. Yet again, I think the district failed and who's impacted? But our kids. So what do we see? I deal with my daughter who calls me and she's crying, did you hear what happened? Did you hear who's leaving? Twice now and then three times after she found out, the third teacher moved over to the history department. So many of these kids in special ed, they might not be going ED. I was at the last or two meetings ago, these kids were not talked about in the presentation. But everybody here has a moral, a legal and an ethical responsibility to take care of special ed and Hastings just doesn't do it. And you've got to take care of them differently than you have been. I know earlier that shifting perspectives was mentioned.
You need to move along, we've gone past three minutes.
Okay, two seniors and one junior, they spearheaded it. It wasn't the district and Tesfa and Dolan, they supported them. So please, somebody go talk to these kids, let them know that the district and leadership has their backs. I don't understand why other districts can do this and we're constantly back to the same conversation. So please, please do better.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Bloomfield and I live at 76 Rosedale Avenue and I'm also on the Board of SEPTA and thank you, oh Jean Love, but thank you for addressing some of our concerns today, earlier today in the meeting. But we would also like to read into the minutes, a letter that SEPTA circulated today amongst our membership and also the public. So I'm just going to read the letter so it's recorded. So to the Board of Education, Bill, Melissa and Jean. So we are writing to express our concerns about the state of special education in Hastings schools. The department has recently experienced significant turnover in its leadership and teaching staff. Importantly, our district lost a trusted and collaborative leader with strong vision when we failed to retain our Assistant Director for Special Education who left not by choice, but because our district made it impossible to stay. And while we are glad for the addition of an interim Assistant Superintendent of PPS, we are disappointed that the district, despite a year and a half of lead time, could not find a permanent hire thus ensuring greater continuity and stability for a vulnerable population of students. Now we are experiencing an understaffed department and confusion among families about who is responsible for what. We've lost tremendous institutional knowledge since the last school year and our children, families and staff feel it. We ask that the following happen right away and with transparency. One, please lay out the future expected structure of our special education department. Will there be another Assistant Director brought in to replace Tesfa Stewart's old position? And if not, how does the district propose to fill that gap of expertise and personnel hours? Two, what is the hiring process for our new permanent Assistant Superintendent of PPS? And importantly, when will it start? We believe it must begin right away in order to avoid a last-minute interim appointment of which we've had several recently in which staff and community are not able to be involved and the Board of Education cannot exercise proper oversight. Three, at its August 26th meeting, the BOE discussed reviving a special education committee consisting of representatives from the Board, Special Ed Department, District and Building Administration, SEPTA and perhaps students. A board member with expertise in this area called this idea very valuable and generously offered to serve on it. We ask this committee to be created now. Data released earlier this month and today shows how poorly the special education department on population fares compared with general ed students, underscoring the challenges our district faces in this area and leaving us deeply worried about the present and the future. We look forward to understanding the district's plan to strengthen our special education department and improve performance among its students. And we are eager to learn more about the process for promptly putting leadership and staff in place. Last, we call on the Board of Education to continue its vital role in researching, assessing and inquiring into our schools and in working with Hastings administration to shape our district's vision for the special education department. Sincerely, the Board of SEPTA. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just a couple of comments, I wasn't planning to comment tonight, but on the Dignity Act, the conversation was really good and I wanted to ask, I know you can't respond directly, but the question I'm posing is whether there's consideration to teachers also being trained at all levels in what a potential Dignity Act violation is so that it is brought through the proper channels. I know there have been instances where sexual harassment or sexual innuendo has happened in the middle school in front of teachers, in front of PE teachers and in front of aides and that in those instances, because it was witnessed by an adult and seemingly ignored or sanctioned, kids realized there was no point to reporting it because when adults witness something and don't react, then you realize that that's okay, that's part of the culture. So it seems to me that there's a professional learning piece to this where if staff and aides and folks who are all, you know, cafeteria, wherever they are, are witnessing something that's potentially reportable, even if it's not a Dignity Act violation, maybe it's just a code of contact violation, they need to know that that gets reported. Because I, I agree, I think these things are happening and maybe not reaching the right The last thing I wanted to say is I'm curious, on the disciplinary data, thank you so much for that. I'm curious if there's any way to break it down by how students are being disciplined by race. Anecdotally, I have heard sometimes there are disproportionate disciplinary actions because in and out of school suspensions are such a small number, I'm imagining that probably can't be reported out because it would be a privacy violation. However, I imagine that if you took other disciplinary actions in aggregate, maybe that would help us understand who's being punished and in what way and whether it's fair. And last, to speak about something I spoke about a couple of weeks ago, I'll just say again that I think until we can improve our hiring and retention practices to hire teachers of color and leaders of color, none of this is going to get fixed because we cannot expect changes down the line in terms of equity when we do not have leaders of color in our district, just full stop. So we need to do a better job hiring them and when they're here, we need to do a better job of holding on to those valuable people. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's return to, go back on the agenda and we'll hear from Bill and Maureen, an update on the September 4th incident in the high school and evacuation and reunification.
Do you want to state?
No, I was actually going to say, I think, why don't you guys go?
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome to go.
Thank you.
All right, and when I'm about to share is in the public records, you can look at it. When we meet, critique please.
Yeah.
Thank you for your valuable input.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Quite intentionally, the document I'm going to walk through, not word by word or line by line, and Maureen will join me in this, is posted because it's very important that a PowerPoint, which is a summary of a larger document, not be what's in the record, but actually the detailed analysis. And what's here is, for the last, since the incident on the 4th, we've been investigating, reviewing, we've been meeting with the Board in executive session. So on the 17th in an executive session, the Board received a version of this report plus a companion document that Maureen had put together, it's all been folded into here. Based on the Board's questions on the 17th that were parallel and weaving with ongoing investigation since the 4th, we've come up with a set of summaries, findings and a set of recommendations for going forward as we're trying to help our students make use of AI in appropriate ways. A certain AI instrument I turned to on this, it's called Notebook Al-Lam, I footnoted it. It's just, it's a very valuable resource for pulling materials together, but each of what, the words and sentences, everything here, I own. Maureen contributed a great deal, but it's quite intentional. The AI was in a sense a research assistant on this, but the final word was very much what Maureen and I put together. Here you find an overview of what occurred and there were, in section two, there are a set of strengths that guided us and will guide us going forward. And on page two here, that students had been trained, this is the incident in the actual chem lab. The analysis showed that students had had safety training and that was critical. The chemical inventory management, while it was a failure of one of those items, the actual inventory management has been strong and external individuals told us that, including the Westchester responders told us that. Routine equipment checks have been underway, even though it was an equipment failure, that has been underway. And then the evacuation reunification that occurred after the chem lab spill, after we had to evacuate the building, that as the Hastings Police Department put it, this is not something that we had been able to train for or practice. And so they were in the middle of an incident managing some 1,100 students with a lot of new administrators and how we would pull that off and we largely did. And I felt that was rooted in the fact that we now have very strong relationships amongst the Hastings Police, Fire and our lead administrators, which helped us be frankly quick on our feet. And Maureen was essential, Melissa Samansky was essential, the principals were essential, but that was key. Having said all that, we are being very open here as matters about weaknesses and gaps. And you can go back and look at this later, but several things stand out. First off is we already had approved an incident commander structure and that's quite intentional, quite purposeful. We're required by the state to have both confidential emergency plans, those are the building ones, but we also have public district plans. In the confidential building plans, it indicates who the incident commander is. The Farragut complex, while it has two schools, is a school building and the incident commander for that is Andy Kleiman backed up by Dan Waldak. Yours truly, a superintendent stepped into that incident commander role in this situation, that was a mistake. I was supposed to say in my communication role and we've sorted out what that meant, but there was in a sense some lack of clarity that we just didn't hold to the proven plan. That will not happen again. Along the way, very specific things occurred. When we have personnel, ambulance personnel, et cetera, come into a building, it's required we go into hold and place. We did not do that. Going forward, we will do that. For any incident, you want to keep people out of the hallways, have some degree of privacy if it's individuals needing help or assistance, and this was one of those and we should have done the hold and place. On scene safety lapses, within the science lab in particular, while goggles were worn by the teacher, other PPE was not worn. Actually, the state does not, does not require PPE to be used within science classrooms. Having said that, we are looking at that, continue to look at that. Maureen has brought in, external experts are helping us think about that question as well as will say is the management of our chemical, chemical resources, et cetera. But we are going to be looking at that. We may be saying that even if the state doesn't require PPE with our students, we might do that, but we have to look very carefully, very experienced science teachers and we want to work closely with them on things that won't disrupt the educational process. We also point three, we had some procedural discrepancies and quite importantly, siblings. And I want to protect the privacy of the particular students involved, but in all cases, there were siblings. And we needed to immediately get to those siblings and secure, support them and bring them to a central location so they would know that their siblings were fine. Because rumors were moving around the building, around the Burke Estate when students were out there and that was not helpful to some of those students. We also need to make sure that students, no matter whether the whole classroom in this case or several students, have ongoing medical attention, that's often a family issue, but ongoing counseling. And we have to be explicit that this was a situation that required ongoing medical attention. When I first wrote on the next day, that day, that everything was fine, I, that while the students by and large were fine, that there was medical attention required. And I've talked with two of the three families in the last 24 hours and they wanted me to make sure that everything's fine. At the same time, this was a several week issue, it was not an immediate issue, because this was potentially quite serious. We also found that the internal, external communication was not what it should have been. We now have systems in place to address that and it's laid out later in this document for both internally, how that would happen and externally. We also clarified that except at the time when the high schoolers are on their open lunch period, we will not be doing a broad dismissal. We bear responsibility for the students all the way up through senior, their senior year and also parents are going to be, are prohibited from signing out students during the midst of an emergency. So we're bringing clarity to that. So coming out of this, there are eight major core findings listed here, everything from strict adherence to the chain of command, item one, down through the last two, which I just want to repeat because they're so important, is that when we have a major safety incident, we need ample time. We won't race to any particular decisions around personnel or all the rest and we need time to understand and help people understand what occurred. And if those students and staff number eight directly affected, we need to make sure that we're providing necessary counseling and also medical support. we're providing necessary counseling and also medical support, and that's not done in a couple of days. So here we are, several weeks later, we need to be providing counseling and check-in support for those students, and that's another area that we have to get better on. So the rest of this document is a chart listing area of improvement, specific action required, the lead responsibility, and then target dates. So this, I think, is a very serious chart. Andy Clayman, as the incident commander, has taken charge of this chart. You do see some places where it says district administration as opposed to building administration or the BRT, the Building Response Team. The High School Building Response Team is meeting tomorrow to begin to plan out the steps laid out here, things that sit with the district leadership, Maureen, Melissa, me, Jean in some cases. We will follow up on that, but it's all here charted. And what we anticipate for you as a board is that in a couple of meetings, Andy Clayman will come to you to do an update from the building level for Farragut Complex on how we're doing on these things. I imagine it might be in about a month. But tonight, it was very important, you heard from me, and Maureen's about to fill in areas I may miss, or you may, things you might want to underscore.
Yeah, I think you covered it.
Think I got it all?
I think so.
I practiced. So, but I think it's important that tonight, it was still the district leadership allowing Mr. Clayman, Andy Clayman, to meet with his BRT before coming forward to you. So again, this entire document is here. I guess I gave a PowerPoint version of it, but it's important that this specific document's in the public record. I want to repeat that the families most directly affected did see, had a copy of it this afternoon, and I have been in conversation with them. And for many of them, underscoring what we did do well, but also apologizing for things we could have done better. So this is now in the public record, and we will continue working on it.
Thanks, Bill. I just want to say, we know that every emergency prepares us for the next inevitable one, right? And I just want to just state how serious you all took this, and even more so, how much thought and work you've put into this document to ensure that the next emergency is going to be treated differently and with a lot of care, and so I really appreciate everything you guys have put together.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the business. Business items, 1 through 10. Any comments, questions? We have a motion to approve business items 1 through 10?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can move on to the placement services for CSC and CPSC. Have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So personnel, we're going to do is a consent agenda for the appointments and amendments and resignations. I have a motion to approve all of the personnel section of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And let's move on to the approval of the minutes from the September 25th. Anybody have any thoughts, questions? Dave, Bee, no? So can I have a motion to accept, to approve the minutes from the 9:25 meeting? That, no, that's not right. From the September 9th, sorry, and the September 11th meetings. This is 9:25, I think, right?
Yes.
Melissa got those minutes done really fast.
Whew.
Maureen?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Me too.
You too? Four and a me too. Anybody else for public comment? Agenda review for our next meeting on...
Yeah, let me, if I may, just reiterate, we've been pointing at two major updates. It'll be on the 7th. I don't know if you want to introduce them all, Maureen. One is the capital bond, while the construction manager, some of the team here, providing a set of updates on timing, still preliminary, but it'll be around the three propositions. They've already been rolling up their sleeves. Maureen and I have been meeting with them, including Joe, and she and I will stay front and center on that. I don't know, Maureen, if you agree, it is helpful to now have a strong point pulling this together through, you know, the firm, and I'm, go ahead.
Right, no, I think now, which you'll get the first taste of at the next meeting, is really just having a construction manager who will be really acting on behalf of the district. And the first piece will be to kind of lay out some schedules, some dates, some understanding of dates that were either developed and kind of how like there's going to be key updates at different points in time, and just kind of giving you just kind of an overall sense of currently where we are, and then, you know, at different, very important dates, and what deliverables that we should be expecting to see and all the rest, and keeping us updated. So...
I think it'd be really helpful to kind of have a timetable.
Yeah, so basically, that is what they do. They almost lay out like a schedule, which will kind of show key dates and different things in which they anticipate different work happening, just really the schedule of the bond from what has occurred since the vote, you know, how the vote has gone through, and then where different key dates, such as, you know, when we should expect things to go to the state. And then, within that meeting also, we'll be talking about, about having some meetings, really about the fields, because that particular part of the bond, as we know, in terms of scheduling, is going to be because of, it's not obviously as large as the development of the plans for the addition, but we are, you know, kind of making some good progress there. And we had talked about bringing kind of some folks together, or, you know, within the Board and other people to maybe have a separate meeting or so to speak about where we are there and make sure that, you know, we're sharing, similar to what the Board did before the budget vote, what we understand to be the bid requirements and things like that, so.
Yeah, so we'll, yeah, we'll be specific at that meeting around what might be called an athletic field renovations work group, which may include, we'll include, aren't you, board members, we'll include two students, one of whom is sitting here, they'll be Siri to be. And then, I think, we're going to want to have that group meet with the construction manager, land, LA group, to think about some community updates. But at least have that group, and have that group get, so we'll have more detail on that on the 7th.
Right, because we really see, the construction manager is a key part of that group, is the person who's really going, you know, part of their role beyond ensuring the schedule, making sure everyone's kind of staying. From the architects to all the contractors, they're also really involved with bid specifications, reviewing bids, reviewing responses to bids, quite frankly, and interviewing and ensuring that whatever contractor's ultimately selected can, is demonstrated that they'll be able to meet all the bid specifications and their help to that. So that, being that that is their primary role, they're really going to be a very important person in terms of like overseeing all the work. But of course, right now, we know in particular that the field work will be submitted, will be something that's happening because of the nature of the work will be happening sooner than later. So, you know, I think we'll get that committee, we want to make sure that with their guidance and their help, we get some dates on the calendar, because I think we'll be looking to do that fairly soon, quite frankly, within the next month.
And I think it's going to be really important this year to give regular updates, really like at every meeting, every board meeting, but also maybe to have it on our website or someplace easily.
Yeah, we're going to build a website.
Accessible. And in terms of the fields, I appreciate the idea of a committee, but I also think at some point, if we're going to talk about it at a board meeting, we should make it pretty clear to the public, because, so that people feel that they both will be able to hear what the thinking is in the process, but also so people can feel like they can also be heard about.
Right, that's why I think it may be outside of a board meeting structure, it may just be another, like, I mean, the thinking now is to have meetings just on that topic, which would then allow for, you know, the back, you know, the question and answers to occur at the meeting as opposed to this format. So that's really the thinking, it would be, they'll present to you at the next meeting, and then as we think about how we want to get some dates on the calendar for that very...
Just a question on that. Here or in a community forum sort of setup?
I think a community forum setup, but it could be physically here, you know.
We could, we could.
Yeah, like the community, like outside of the school, I think, would be, like the outreach.
I think at the community center would be good.
Rec center, right?
Yeah, I mean, we could do it anywhere.
Yeah, we could do it, we could do multiple venues on that. It's just to update people. The other big item on the 7th, we keep pointing to is the Farragut Wing update. A lot of work is underway, and we, on the 7th, will be able to give, not yet date certain, but at least a date framework and an update. And I think we probably want to bring some update on budget terribly and all the rest where we are.
Yeah, sure.
So we give you, because we'll know a lot as of the 7th, and that will clarify a number of the questions that are out there. Work is underway and very actively so. And just finally, I'll say, as I continue, I have great appreciation for the staff and the students and their patience with where we are. And we did make some corrections in terms of the Farragut Gym as a location. We now only have one teacher in there at a time. We tried to have that with two teachers, and despite great work by Joe and his team and everyone else, it just still was too noisy. But actually, Lauren Iorio's credit was with finding extra room to make that work. So, but people being very patient beyond simply the gym, and I really appreciate that. So we wanted to give a big intro on next, on the 7th, because there are two big items that we've been pointing at.
Also the audit report?
Yeah, and that's just one.
I'm sorry?
Audit report.
Yeah, it audits gigantic at the beginning, then capital bond, then Farragut Wing. So it's a full meeting.
Unlike tonight.
Unlike tonight.
It'll be longer.
Any more comments, thoughts?
I would just say, I appreciate the administration's willingness to look at things and take feedback and improve, kind of a continuous improvement mindset, you know. I think I speak for all of us that we appreciate that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, it's a very full meeting tonight. Okay?
We're a full district.
Anybody else?
It was very important. It was about very important topics.
Yeah, for sure. Okay? Good? All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you going to bang that gavel?